Good evening and welcome. This is the special meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on 3rd, 2022. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this special meeting has been given by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on the 18th day of April 2022. Notice that this meeting has been posted to the municipal website, princetonnj.gov/calender. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet and the Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on April 8th, 2020, and again on January 6th, 2021. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. During hearings on applications for development, members of the public have an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Public comment is heard by the board after an applicant's representatives have finished their presentations and have been questioned by planning board members and staff. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand using the button at the center of the bottom of the participant screens, or if participating by phone, by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect to members of the public, express your views in three minutes less. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. Carrie, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Capizoli?
Here.
Mr. Chow?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Sax?
Here.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
I see Jack, but there we go.
Have I pushed the wrong button again?
We can hear you now.
Well, congratulations, Jack.
Mr. Bodikheimer?
Here.
Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thanks. So we have a few quick orders of business here. Resolutions. Before we go to the hearing tonight, the first is Law Offices of Gerald Muller, PC, regarding litigation, Greenberg, Greenberg Brown versus Princeton Planning Board. Can someone speak to this resolution? I... Is this something that Mr. Muller needs?
This is related, this is related to the litigation on Humbert Street. We never formally adopted this in order for counsel to take action, so we were asked to do this last week, so I got it on the agenda quickly.
Okay, all right, thank you. So this authorizes, I'm sorry that I
Yes, it authorizes.
I overlooked this in the background materials.
It's part of the background material that counsel requires in order for them to take action. Knowing that we were going to do this today, the contract's been approved, but we have to provide them with the resolution, and I promised it on this date.
All right, thanks. Would someone like to move that? Mr. Cohen?
Second.
Actually, Madam Chair, I need to recuse myself. A client of mine is litigant, so.
Ah, okay.
I will move then.
Moved by Mr. Quinn, seconded.
A second.
And Mr. Tex Arney. Does this recall or require a roll call vote, Carrie, in? Or Michael, in your view, or can we do a voice vote?
I would say a roll call.
Okay. Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Chow?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Thanks. The second resolution relates to Princeton International Properties, which was a minor minor site plan at 4042 North Tulane Street, block 2702, excuse me, 27 point oh two, lot 47. This is file number P2121-056PM. Any questions or concerns? And if not, would someone like to move this? Mr. Cohen moves and is seconded by
I'll second.
Mr. Tex Arney, thank you. Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have a hearing, Turhune Development Urban Renewal LLC. This is preliminary and final major site plan, North Harrison Street and Turhune Road, block 7401, lots 1.102 and 1. Excuse me, 1.102 and 1.02, excuse. File number P2121-131P. And this is a big, important project, and a lot of people are interested in it, and I know a lot of work has gone into it. So we look forward to to digging right in here. I'm aware that the applicant would like, if at all possible, to lead this hearing tonight, and with that in mind, I would just that sounds fine to me, as long as we get through everything, so. So I'm thinking that we will, of course, hear first from our just an introduction from Mr. La Place, and then ask the applicant to do their presentation, and we'll hear from all of their expert witnesses, and if there are any urgent pressing questions that must be asked in between witnesses, of course, board members may do that, but because I think a fair number of changes have been made to the plan to respond to the comments made by our professional staff and by boards and commissions and committees, probably makes sense to hear the entire presentation before we talk about it, so. With that in mind, let's dig in. Mr. La Place?
Chair, I thought it'd be a good idea to ask Mr. Regan to start off by giving us the context of how this project fits in with our overall Fair Share Housing Plan and Affordable Housing Initiatives here in Princeton, and then I'll give a brief overview.
Yep, and I will be brief. It's really just to refresh everybody's memory, and for those that haven't participated in the past actions. But back in July of 2020, this property was included as part of an affordable housing overlay pursuant to the affordable housing settlement that was approved by the court, and that ordinance was, you know, reviewed by the board as part of its consistency review. And then a little less than a year later, the council designated the wind site as an area in need of redevelopment, and that was pursuant to a recommendation of this board who held a public hearing in April of 2021. Subsequent to that, the council designated the applicant as a conditional redeveloper for purposes of commencing negotiations on a redevelopment agreement, which have been ongoing since that period of time. And that redevelopment agreement will include, well, will address a number of community benefits, many of which will be described this evening by the applicant as part of their presentation. In June of last year, a redevelopment plan was adopted for this property, and obviously, the application that's being presented this evening is being presented pursuant to and in accordance with the requirements of that redevelopment plan. That redevelopment plan was reviewed by this board prior to adoption as part of a consistency review. And then one last point, and is, I guess there was a subdivision, a minor subdivision that was actually done last year also for this property, which this board reviewed and approved. In short, the redevelopment plan that's applicable to this site and the application that is being presented this evening is an as-of-right application, fully compliant with all the requirements of the redevelopment plan. And we look forward to the board's hearing the application and considering it.
Thank you for that, and for members of the public for whom Mr. Regan is not a familiar face necessarily, he frankly is our special counsel for redevelopment projects. So he is our attorney here tonight.
Yes.
Thank you, Frank. Oh, no, that's quite all right.
All right, thank you, Frank, and before us today, this evening, is the applicant Turhune Development Urban Renewal LLC, who has requested preliminary and final major site plan approval for this project site at North Harrison Street and Turhune Road.
I'm sorry to cut in. Michael, should you be sworn in first?
I guess, sure.
Yes, that's a good catch, Owen.
That's the normal procedure.
Typically, yes, swear in all of our professional staff.
Jerry with us?
Consultants.
Where is our counsel?
We can do.
Frank, Frank is doing everything for us tonight.
Okay.
Yep.
And I don't think Mr. Purcell's on yet.
Okay, well, we'll do him when he's ready to speak. So, Michael, do you swear the testimony about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, including what I've already started saying, so. Great, so it's, the location is block 7401, lots 1.02 and 1.102. It is within the Harrison-Turhune redevelopment zone, which I'll talk about in a moment. The existing site, which is currently vacant, is located at the southeasterly corner of North Harrison Street and Turhune Road. It's immediately north of the Princeton Shopping Center. And we all know where the Princeton Shopping Center is, in the east central area of the municipality. The project site was once part of the shopping center site, and appears to have been the location where Phil was deposited from the construction of the shopping center in 1954. The applicant is requesting site plan approval to construct a four-story, 125-unit apartment building. The residential complex will have amenities for both residents and the general public. The project's part of Princeton's Fair Share Housing Plan, and will provide 25 affordable housing units. Vehicular access to the site will be from an entrance on North Harrison Street, and both entering and exiting from the site will be accommodated from a new road to be built along the easterly side of the premises. This new road will feature a linear park with pedestrian and bicycle trails, as well as landscape and recreational features. There will be a drop-off lane for the building on Turhune Road, so this would be the north-facing side of the building, facing north. Sidewalks will run along Turhune Road and North Harrison Street, and they will connect to the new linear park, which I just mentioned, near that new connector street at the easterly side of the site. The applicant is proposing two sites along the westerly side of the building facing North Harrison Street for the installation of public art. Other site amenities will include a playground, a dog run, park, and gathering spaces. As I said, this zoning for the site is the Harrison-Turhune redevelopment zoning district. The use that's proposed is permitted, and there are no variances being requested. So one more point I'll point out, because this is always of concern in Princeton. The subject property is not located within a historic district and does not contain any existing landmark structures. I think I'll leave it at that and let the applicant begin their presentation.
Okay, who is going to start on behalf of of the applicant, Mr. Letizia?
Yes, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. Tom Letizia, attorney with Troutman Pepper Hamilton Sanders, representing Turhune Development Urban Renewal LLC in connection with this application for redevelopment of a longtime vacant property adjacent to the Princeton Shopping Center. It's a pleasure to be before you again for this application. Turhune Development Urban Renewal is the applicant, and the selected redeveloper, as was indicated by Mr. Regan. And it's a corporate affiliate of the Wind Development Company, which, and was established by Wind specifically for the ownership and construction of the redevelopment project that is the subject of tonight's hearing. To make it easy and avoid confusion during our presentation, we will be referring to Win or Win Companies or Wind Development rather than Turhune Development. So when we're mentioning Win, we're referring to the applicant Turhune Development. I did not hear from either Mr. Regan or Ms. Philip about the jurisdiction of this board for tonight. I assume the notices and the affidavits we supplied are in order, and it's confirmed that you have jurisdiction.
I can confirm that. Yes, I did review all of that, and the notices are proper, and the board does have jurisdiction to hear the application.
Thank you, Mr. Regan. So as was summarized by both Mr. Regan and Mr. La Place, the specific property we will be discussing this evening is identified as lots 1.012 and lot 1.02 and block 7401 on the Princeton tax map. And it's located at the southeast corner of North Harrison Street and Turhune Road. The approximately six-acre parcel is governed by the Harrison-Turhune redevelopment plan and subject to the zoning and design criteria of the Harrison-Turhune redevelopment zone. That zone applies exclusively to this site. This is owned for the wind portion of the approximately 42-acre North Harrison redevelopment area, which also includes, by the way, as you know, the shopping center and Grover Park, was adopted by the Princeton mayor and council back in June 14th, 2021, as was indicated by Mr. Regan. The proposed site plan conforms in all respects with the redevelopment plan and the Princeton Land Use Code, and thus, I can say emphatically, variance and design waiver free. The Wind Team is thrilled to be presenting this project to the planning board. And the reason we are particularly excited is because the project is unique, or it goes well beyond your typical multifamily inclusionary development of 125 residential apartments. Yes, 25 units will be set aside for very low, low and moderate-income families, which is clearly an important public benefit that assists Princeton in meeting its affordable housing obligations under the municipality's third-round compliance plan. However, there is much more being offered by this development for the neighborhood community in the form of significant public amenities, as was cited by Mr. La Place, including the construction of a linear park, a dog park, public art gathering places, streetscape improvements along both North Harrison and Turhune, and an extensive network of bicycle lanes and pedestrian pathways that encourage people to use these alternative means of transportation rather than rely solely on driving a car. As you will hear and see this evening, the Wind Project will also incorporate a high level of sustainability and green building measures to reduce the project's carbon footprint over the long term. Practically speaking, none of this would be possible without the collaboration that we fortunately have been able to foster with Princeton over the past couple of years in sharing a joint vision for the site's development, one that not only serves the future residents of the residential building, but is also a place for the public at large to gather, play, enjoy art, and take leisurely walks or bike rides. Speaking on behalf of my client, we very much appreciate the cooperation, time, and effort devoted by the members and staff of the Princeton Council Redevelopment Subcommittee in working with the Wind Team to carry out the municipality's goals and objectives of the redevelopment plan for this area. In our view, this is what it means to have a true public-private partnership through the mechanism of redevelopment. Public-private partnership, mixed-income housing, and a commitment to community and sustainability. These are the themes that will be emphasized throughout our presentation. And Win has a proven track record in all three. Couple of housekeeping items. We submitted a letter from PSNS, our engineers, dated April 27th, 2022, addressing all comments in the review memos issued as of that date. I trust the board and its staff have received copies of that letter. Our response letter and the testimony will show that we agree to the majority of the recommendations. And the plan revisions, you will see this evening, are reflected on the exhibits. There are only a small handful of comments we disagree with, and our reasons are set forth in the, in the letter. We have no objection to our April 27th correspondence being made part of any resolution approving the application, should the board ultimately reach that decision. The second item is that we have a court reporter in attendance. Therefore, it is important that anyone talking keeps their voice level up and speaks clearly so that the reporter can accurately transcribe these proceedings. Here's the roadmap of what we intend to cover this evening. I have six witnesses. First, two executives of Wind Development will be making some brief opening remarks. And then our civil engineer will discuss the site plan detail. He will be followed by our traffic engineer, and then our building architect. And we will end with testimony on the project's sustainability elements from Wind's own Director of Energy and Sustainability. And as the chair noted in the beginning, and we appreciate our request that we be able to go through our entire presentation, and then, of course, we, everyone, witnesses and others of the Wind Team will be available to answer all questions from board members, staff, as well as the public. Finally, our witnesses will be referring to a series of exhibits, a total of 37 slides, which were submitted last week to the Planning Board Office and have been posted on the board's website in advance of tonight's hearing. And Mr. Regan, we ask that these exhibits be entered into the record as a single exhibit. I think that's the best way, and we can identify that as A1 for the record.
That's fine, we can mark it as A1.
The slides have
Is there a date? Is there a date?
It's dated today.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes. The slides have titles and are numbered. Each witness will identify which exhibit he or she is referring to as they go through their testimony, and as well as their page number, so that way everyone can follow along. So unless you have questions for me at this point, I would like to begin our presentation.
I think that would be good. Why don't we swear in your, the entire Turhune/Wind Development team, so that we can be efficient about that? Does that work for you?
That's that's fine, yes, and I'll state their names so that they can put on their videos and raise their hands. Steve, Stephen Gilbert, David Ginsburg, Mark Sefeli, Corey Chase, Jesper Ryberg, and Ted Osborne. And finally, Christina McPike.
If you could all raise your right hand, do you swear the testimony you're about to give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And Madam Chair, while we're swearing people, maybe we can just swear in all of the board's professionals and municipal officials who may be speaking tonight, if we can just get them on the screen.
Sure.
And just have them, so we can get out of the way.
That would be Mr. Dobremilsky, Mr. Purcell, Bridger, Mr. Sapudor. Anybody else?
Mr. McGinnis, I guess.
Oh.
Mr. Scoopian.
Sorry, Dan.
Mr. Scoopian, okay.
And this, yes, yes, and Mr. Scoopian, okay.
Okay, you all, do you all have, raise your right hand, do you swear that any testimony you're about to give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much.
I do.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sure. Ms. Philip, do you need for the applicant's witnesses to spell their last names as we typically do, or can you get that from the screen?
I'm fine, I have the information.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Letizia, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. All my team members except Mr. Ginsburg and Mr. Gilbert. Please take off, you know, turn off your video. Okay. So we're going to begin with Mr. Gilbert. So Mr. Gilbert, please state your affiliation with Wind, please.
I'm Vice President of Wind Development.
And I think you're now going to start our exhibit presentation. This is I believe, the cover page, page one, correct?
That's correct, right? I'm still on page one.
Go ahead, Steve.
Madam Chair, members of the Planning Board, members of the community. Not only am I a member of Wind Development, I'm also a Princeton resident. I've lived here over 35 years. I lived on Harrison, Linden, and now Madison Street. I go to Princeton Shopping Center maybe three, four times a week. I often walk my dog there where I can take him into Ace or the pet shop. I regularly shop at McCaffrey's, which, incidentally, is there because I showed Jim McCaffrey the vacant department store back in 1989, when I was working with Jim on another retail project. So I know this area really well. I found this property and acquired it for Win last year. I'm really excited to be building where we're proposing not only affordable housing, but it's being built with a lot of heart. It's being named in memory of my sister, Alice Win, our founder's wife, and our current CEO's mom. So it's a deeply personal project for us. It's the first property, in fact, in our history of our company to be named for a family member. Win's a long-term owner of properties. It's a company that still owns the properties that originally developed 50 years ago. Wins a long-term owner of properties. It's a company that still owns the 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 properties that originally developed fifty years ago. When understands the things that are important to this town, and I've been able to communicate with the team. And reassure them that the things we're doing will work for Princeton. Somebody's going to build on this property, and I feel when is the ideal developer to take on this project. And make it work for this town. Moving to page two, Ben. Now, this exhibit shows our team. By no means is everyone going to speak tonight, but you know, you will principally hear from our engineer and architects from P S and S. And wins in-house Director of Energy and Sustainability. But first, I'd like to introduce David Ginsburg, who heads up when in this region to briefly tell you about our company.
Thanks, Steve. Good evening, everyone. Madam Chair, member of the Princeton Planning Board. Thank you very much for hearing this proposal this evening. Steve mentioned I'm Dave Ginsburg, Senior Vice President of Wind Development. I oversee our New Jersey development efforts. Steve mentioned, we are extremely excited to be working in Princeton. Especially to assist Princeton in fulfilling its affordable housing obligations with its variance and waiver-free application. You'll hear this evening, the core tenants of the North Harrison to Hune project now known as the Alice. Perfectly aligned with when companies corporate values and areas of expertise. Steve mentioned we're a fifty-one-year-old family-owned and operated real estate development company headquartered in Boston, Massachusetts. We're currently the largest manager of affordable housing and mixed-income housing in the country. With properties in twenty-three states and thirty-seven hundred employees nationwide. We pride ourselves in our reputation in the industry. We've never missed a mortgage payment. We've never missed a real estate tax payment in our company's history. We've got a growing and robust development portfolio in New Jersey. With nearly twelve hundred units in development and managed properties totaling more than twenty-one hundred units from Jersey City to Bridgeton to Patterson to Atlantic City to Tim Falls and. Now hopefully to Princeton. Next slide, please, Ben.
Mister Ginsburg, if you could just go back to that slide for a moment, just so we. Put on the record, you were referring to slide three of thirty-seven. Is that correct?
That's correct, Tom. Thank you.
Okay.
Next slide is slide four. As mentioned, we are particularly excited about this project and its guiding philosophies, specifically. The strong public-private collaboration and providing substantial public benefits and betterments. It's inclusion of high-quality housing at a variety of income ranges. And it's incorporate agent of sustainable design philosophies and. Not just sustainability in terms of a high-performance envelope and windows, but also in terms of location, bikeability, walkability, proximity to the shopping center. You'll see in our design, we're encouraging non-gas-dependent vehicular transportation. With bike lanes, bike parking, handicap-accessible walking paths, EV parking and linear park. Next slide, please, Ben. Working collaboratively with public agencies and municipalities has been something we've been doing for fifty years. Highlighting a couple of precedent projects quickly, the Livingston School and Apartments in Albany, New York, which was. A mixed-income senior development, which was done in conjunction with the City of Albany and the Albany Housing Authority from a vacant former school building. Marilyn McCormick, which is in pre-development in Boston, Massachusetts, which upon completion will become one of the largest. Mixed-income public housing transformations in American history. And the Sibley Square Apartments in downtown Rochester, which is a transformation of a former one-point-one-million-square-foot department store into. Mixed-income housing, a food court marketplace, a high-tech incubator, senior housing, family housing, a little bit of everything we're vitalizing downtown Rochester, New York.
Exhibit five.
Slide five. Yeah, thank you. Furthering that theme, we are a national leader in mixed-income housing. Some example projects here include the Harbor Walk, which is a four-cell condo and rental housing on the Boston waterfront. Which includes housing at different income ranges. The Watson, which was a pilot program project for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts new workforce housing initiatives. And then finally, the Gordon Mansfield Veterans Community in Tim Falls, which was completed in twenty-twenty-one, leased up in under a month and provide seventy units of housing for. Veterans with a nonprofit partner Soldier On.
Next slide, please. That was slide six. Right, okay.
And finally, core philosophy of a commitment to community and sustainability. As a company, we have an in-house energy and sustainability division, which is fairly unique. That's led by Christina McPike, who you'll hear from this evening to talk a little bit more about our. Our pride in smart design decisions. To date, we've achieved thirty million dollars in conservative energy since two thousand and ten. We're a partner of the Tarment of Energies Better Building Challenge, and we delivered the largest community solar project in Washington DC, which. See a picture of here. Actually, we believe that housing and really great housing is more than just four walls and a roof. We have a internal team of experts in a division called Connected Communities. That serves a little over three hundred thousand people every year in areas such as financial literacy, health and wellness, economic mobility. And again, all about connecting and providing more than just housing to our residents. Next slide, please. And finally, while not directly applicable to the proposal here tonight, one of our other core areas of expertise is in historic preservation. And historic adaptive reuse. We've done over forty projects, turning vacant school buildings, department stores. Mill buildings in Lowell, Massachusetts into award-winning fantastic places to live. So. And thank you all again for the time. We're really excited to be here. We welcome your questions and comments, and I'll turn it back to you, Tom. And that was slide eight.
Thank you, David. I now call Mark Safeli.
Good evening, everyone.
Mark, please give your full name and business address, please.
Sure, it's it's Mark Safeli. That's C I F as in Frank E L L I. I'm a project manager with P S and S LLC out of our Wall Township office on a at fourteen fifty highway thirty-four.
And what office of what company, Mark?
It's P S and S LLC.
And can you briefly provide the board with your educational and professional background?
Sure. So I have a Bachelor of Science in Mechanical Engineering from TCNJ, where I graduated in two thousand and five. I've been practicing civil engineering for sixteen years with over ten as a licensed engineer. On both public and private sector projects throughout New Jersey. My New Jersey Professional Engineering License is active and up to date. I've testified not before this board, but before numerous boards throughout the state of New Jersey on both planning and zoning boards. I was actually the engineer with when on their tin fall project recently, which completed construction. And I provided testimony on on that project as well.
Thank you, Mr. Safeli. Madam Chair, I offer Mr. Safeli as an expert in civil engineering.
We accept your qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Are you familiar with the site? That's the subject of tonight's application.
Yes, I am familiar with the site and also very familiar with the the general surroundings at the shopping center Grover Park. And the surrounding neighborhood. This project has been very special to me. My grandparents and parents actually moved here from Italy in the nineteen sixties and seventies. I spent a lot of time at the shopping center. When I was visiting my grandparents who lived on TR Place on the other side of the shopping center. I grew up in Hope Well nearby, but I did spend a lot of time here at at the shopping center.
So this must be a very special moment for you.
Definitely, it's somewhere more familiar with than most of my typical projects.
Very good. So let's begin by having you provide. An overview of the property, please.
Sure. So I'm going to share my screen now. So on my screen, you should see exhibit number nine. This is an existing aerial exhibit. Showing just some of the the general site surroundings. I do want to mention that all my exhibits tonight were provided to the town as part of the package, as Tom mentions. Also, all exhibits have been updated as much as possible to reflect the comments that we received from the board professionals. These updates will be discussed throughout my my testimony. And also be represented on any future submissions should we receive approval tonight. On all my exhibits, north is to the bottom of the page, so south is the top, east to the right and west to the left. And this first exhibit is an aerial map, which is taken from NJDEP year twenty twenty imagery. And then I overlaid line work and features from the property survey. Which was submitted as part of the application, just to give an idea of the property location. So the the application tonight is for preliminary and final site plan approval for the proposed property. Known as block seventy-four oh one lots one point zero two and one point zero one two. The property is a total of five point nine two acres, and it's currently owned by the applicant Turhune Development Urban Renewal. General site orientation to the north of our property, which is shown in yellow here. Is Turhune Road, which is the main property frontage for our site. And then across the street is the the Thanet Development, which is under construction and the Princeton Healthcare Center. To the west and east of our property is this mostly single-family development. We have Harrison Street on the east. Which. Is a multi-lane road. And then on the west, we have Grover Avenue further further down with.
Sorry, Mr. Safeli, but I'm I think you're. Unless I'm totally turned around, you're you're mistaking your east and your west. The east is on the left and the rest west is on the right. Isn't that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
All right. So North Harrison's on the west and Grover's on the east. And then to the south, we have the Princeton Shopping Center. Closest stores to us is McCaffrey's as well as the PNC Bank. And then we also have some frontage on Grover Park, which is a Princeton public park. As part of this application, we are proposing a lot consolidation, which would merge the two properties into one single property. I'm gonna zoom in just a bit. So also within their property, there is a fifty-foot-wide right-of-way easement dedicated to Princeton that runs. Along the eastern property line. And within that easement is also a P S E and G easement. So there are. Several utility poles with overhead electric wires. They actually serve as a secondary power source for the shopping center. In terms of zoning, the lots within the Harrison to Hune redevelopment zone. This zone does allow for multifamily residential dwellings as a principal use. It also allows for accessory uses such as surface parking, dog parks, landscape amenities. And other uses customary to the multifamily housing. Some of the goals of the redevelopment plan would be to provide affordable housing. Extending the multi-use path network from Turhune Road to Grover Park. Reducing stormwater impacts and the creation of public art to enhance the pedestrian experience. This would be in collaboration with the municipality and local stakeholders in the design and programming of the art. The lot is currently vacant and mostly wooded. There is a gravel driveway that starts at North Harrison Street, runs through the site and connects into the the shopping center's Loop Road. And then there's also some large debris piles located towards the end of that driveway. We did look at some historic aerial imagery of the property, just to kind of get an idea of what the lot was in the past. It was farmland back in the nineteen forties. It was mostly open with no no trees or vet or no trees. The shopping center was developed in the nineteen fifties, and it was apparent that. Excess soil from the shopping center was likely placed on this property based on the topography that we see. And also some soil tests we did. Turhune Road was actually not constructed until the late nineteen sixties. And with that construction were all the installations of street trees that exist there today. If I slide over. Also, on this exhibit, I have a an aerial view from nineteen seventy-four with the the property limit shown in red. On here, you can clearly see. Those street trees I was mentioning along Turhune Road. And then there was also a double row of trees planted to buffer between our site and the shopping center. Besides that, there was a few small patches of trees on the property, but for the most part, it was just a non-woody, not woody vegetation vegetation. One thing to mention, the trees were planted in an alley, which was a single species of trees. So it does present a problem if something such as a pest or fungus. That prefers the species does come along. Topography on the property ranges. There is. A ridge through the site, so a high point that runs pretty much parallel with Turhune, kind of near the the gravel driveway area. There's a twenty-foot, twenty-one-foot drop from this ridge to Grover Park. And then a five-foot drop from the ridge down to Turhune Road. There's no known stormwater management or drainage conveyance system on the site. In fact, there's only one drainage in on this entire property frontage, and that's located at the northeast corner of the property on Turhune Road. So that additionally, the the site drains in those two directions, but if you go further. To the north, the the northern half of the site drains into Harry's Brook Branch two, which is located across the street. And then the southern portion drains. Through Grover Park, through a conveyance network that runs in the Loop Road, and that ties into Harry's Brook Branch two dash two. Both Harry's Brook branches ultimately connect into Carnegie Lake downstream about two miles or so away. Existing utilities on the site, I did mention we have the overhead electric wires as a secondary service to the shopping center. No other known utilities within the property. There are sewer mains within North Harrison and. Water and gas service lines within Turhune Road. Which would provide services to our potential improvements. In terms of our environmental constraints on the property, there's no mapped wetlands on the property, and we're not located within a flood zone. There is a flood zone associated with Harry's Brook, but it does not cross the curb line of Turhune. Due to the stream being in proximity to our site, we are we are within a DR Delaware Raritan Canal Commission. Zone B site, so we're subject to their stream quarter impact regulations. And that's based on the the flood hazard limit. It's a hundred foot buffer based on that. Soil conditions on the site, there's two mapped soil areas based on the the web soil survey. Both soil types are very poorly drained, type C and D hydrologic group soils. We did have a geotechnical analysis performed on the site where thirteen test pits were were taken. These test pits confirms very poor permeability rates. All but one, I believe, was under one inch per hour, and most of them were closer to zero. So essentially, there's no. Recharge or permeability or. And no recharge from the property into the groundwater. It also determined that there's a fairly shallow bedrock layer. It's about three and a half feet to ten feet below ground. The upper layers were ripable, but it would get more solid below those upper layers. One of the recommendations in the in the soil report was that we should really consider all the. The soils to be hydrologic group D based on these conditions for our stormwater management calculations. They also confirm that there is uncontrolled fill in about half of the test pits on the property. And that fill ranges from depths of one point five feet to two and a half feet. That's the the surface layer on the property. My next exhibit I'm going to bring up is. Sheet ten of thirty-seven. This is an existing photo location exhibit. So this in the center of the map, we have another aerial view of the property with some numbers representing the the photo locations surrounding. In general, there are three hundred and seventy-two trees on the property with calipers over eight inch. These trees have been located by our surveyor and have been identified on the plans with sizes of the. Sizes, species, and also approximate heights as required by the the site plan application. So on this exhibit, we the photos we took here are this past winter. So it gives a better idea of the the coverage on the property and on the surrounding streets. I could see photo six and seven here. This is actually the area. Just zoom in. This is the area surrounding the gravel driveway. You can see there's some smaller trees, but it's mostly just weedy vegetation. So it's it's a lot more open than it would appear from the aerial view, which is much more green. Dario view also would account for the dense understory that exists in this property. So some of the greenery that's at the lower levels would be enhancing the green in this aerial image. So some of the greenery that's at the lower levels would be enhancing the green in this aerial image. Uh per this tree survey that we performed, we found the existing wooded areas on the site contain mostly successional growth deciduous trees. Uh the majority of these vegetation did not exist on the site based on that nineteen seventy-four aerial that we showed on the previous exhibit. Uh and the the composition of this successional growth is really a mixture of deciduous and evergreen trees located on the perimeter. Uh and the deciduous tree species include uh red maple, cataupa, black walnut, and black locust trees, among others. We also noted there are there are some invasive species within this wooded area. Uh we have several trees of heaven, uh which is a host plant to the spotted lanternfly. Uh it's also a very aggressive plant, which tends to outcompete the native vegetation. Uh that concludes my overview of the existing conditions. I'm gonna move into proposed now. So this exhibit is uh page eleven of thirty-seven. It's an overall rendering of the property. Uh it's using the same aerial backgrounds and we overlaid a rendered version of our site improvements. So it's proposed to construct a four-story multifamily building, uh which would be a hundred and twenty-five units and would be known as the Alice. Uh there's a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units within this building, and it includes twenty-five affordable units. Uh our architecture team will get into more details on the building design later. Um but just did want to say, we we basically placed the building along the ridgeline of the of the existing site. Uh the benefit of that is it provides positive drainage away from the foundation in all directions. As Tom and Win Team said earlier, we are meeting all the zoning requirements uh set forth in the redevelopment plan, which includes number of units, uh density, the building height, the lot coverage and impervious coverage, as well as the building and accessory building setbacks. Uh therefore, we are variance-free application uh in both use and bulk requirements. So some of the other features we have on the site, uh we have surface parking to serve the building that's located in the the side and rear yard of the property.
Mr. Sefeli, can can you zoom in a little bit? I'm so I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you make that image bigger? It's um, yeah.
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I saw the surface parking. We do have a a small dog run for the residents located behind the building. Uh there's bicycle storage and parking throughout the site. It's fairly scattered to uh give lots of opportunity for bicycle parking. I'll get more into detail on that later on. Uh we have various outdoor areas for the residents, uh including a patio at the rear. Uh there's additional patio space at the front as well. And then we have a series of public improvements that we're proposing on the property. Uh so the public improvements include two art spaces for uh that they would each house a sculpture. So there's one on Harrison, one on the intersection of Harrison and a new road that would be proposed. Uh there's also a linear park on the property, which features a a playground aimed at two-to-five-year-olds. Uh we thought that was the most appropriate age group for this type of uh building. And then there's also a a paver plaza area with with seating and other spaces built into it. Uh we do have a a neighborhood dog run at the top of the property bordering Grover Park. Uh and that would be open to the public. Besides that, we're proposing some public street scape improvements on both Harrison and Turhune. I did mention the new road. This is a a connector road from Turhune to the shopping center. Uh it would be constructed by others. Um we depicted on our plans really just to show that its design fits with the development's layout and also to ensure that the stormwater management is accounted for. Uh accessed into our part of the property to for vehicles would be from three different locations. We have our main entrance is is off of Harrison Street. Uh there's a drop-off loading area located in the the front of the building with access off Turhune. And then there's a secondary vehicle access point into the property off of the new connector road.
Mr. Sefeli, just a a point of clarification. Uh in terms of this uh new road, you you indicated that is to be uh built by by others. Uh there is a connection proposed uh from the existing right way uh to the shopping center. That's
Yes.
Isn't that part of of Wins' construction obligation?
Correct. So that that this last piece, which uh the right way ends approximately here. So the last stretch would be on when to construct to the for the final connection.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Uh I'm gonna move on to my next exhibit. This is a site plan rendering. Uh it's sheet twelve of thirty-seven. Uh basically the same as the last last exhibit. I do have notes and dimensions shown on here, so I can zoom in and give more detail. I'm going to walk everyone through the specific details of the site improvements. I'm gonna start near our main entrance at North Harrison Street and work my way clockwise around the property. So zooming in on this main entrance. Uh I'll start. We do have a the entrance off Harrison, it would be a right turn in only and right turn out only uh as North Harrison Street is a divided road with a median. Uh we are proposing a do-not-block-the-box pavement marking at the at the exit to the site, which would provide uh easier circulation to merchants with traffic uh at the traffic light ahead. We are proposing significant landscaping improvements at this main entrance. It serves as a buffer to the parking lot and also a just a um a nice visual aesthetic as you enter the site. Uh the first parking spot is about fifty feet from North Harrison Street, so it gives a good amount of room for this buffering. Uh we do have our first monument sign located in this area, uh which is a double-sided sign, so it'd be visible from either direction on North Harrison. In accordance with the redevelopment plan, the sign would be uh less than seven feet tall, and it would also have sign face areas less than forty square feet on each side. Uh we'll get into further detail on the architectural presentation of the the visual styling of the sign, but it is it is designed to fit the materials and style of the building. And it would also be uplift. As we walk further north along Harrison, uh we are providing a new sidewalk uh to replace the existing four-foot-wide sidewalk. The new sidewalk would be five feet wide and uh constructed of scored concrete. There would be a grass strip maintains between the sidewalk and North Harrison Street for safety and also to give a break in the uh impervious coverage. Uh along North Harrison, we are proposing a buffered bike lane. Uh that's in accordance with the the Princeton Bicycle Master Plan. So it's a six-foot-wide, one-way bicycle lane uh with a seven-foot-wide or approximately seven-foot-wide striped buffer uh to give some protection from the the traffic that exists on the road. In order to install this bike lane, we would be eliminating the dedicated right-turn lane that currently exists on North Harrison. Uh I do understand that Princeton is working on general improvements to North Harrison Street to accommodate better bicycle movement. Uh so this would extend that further past our site. Uh as you make your way to the intersection of Turhune and Harrison, we did extend the bicycle lane across the the road with a striped crosswalk. Uh and then we're also making improvements at the the intersection sidewalk area. This area currently houses uh the signal equipment, so that there's some controllers above and below grounds, uh as well as the the signal poles, which would all remain. Uh we've worked our proposed sidewalks around those features uh to provide ADA compliant access to the intersection and crosswalks. Uh there would be new curb ramps here as well with detectable warning surfaces as required. Uh and the the crosswalks would be restripped uh accordingly. Uh part of the recommended improvements that we received in the the letters was to mill and pave the the lanes closest to our property, so we would be repaving those uh with construction. As we move further along around the corner, now we're onto Harrison Street. Uh we do continue our bike lane along, or sorry, Turhune Road. Um we do continue our our bicycle lane down to Turhune Road. Uh it's not a bu- buffered bicycle lane, it's just a standard uh five-foot-wide lane with also one way. Uh there's an existing multi-use path on the opposite side for bicycle traffic in the other direction. And this is in accordance with the Bicycle Master Plan again, which required a a standard bike lane. We're also proposing new um curbing. There's no curbing existing along either of these roads, so we would be providing that as part of the improvements, uh as well as sidewalk along Turhune Road. Uh in this first section, we are offsetting our sidewalk to go behind beyond the right-of-way line. Uh and the purpose of that was twofold. It was really to to be able to save as many of these existing street trees as we could, so we're we are saving eight of those um uh eastern pine trees that were installed with the Turhune Road construction. And then we're also keeping our sidewalk out of the Delaware Raritan Canal Commission buffer zone. Uh they limit the types of disturbances you can do, and uh we were able to keep it out of that zone by shifting it. Moving further down the road, uh we now hit our our drop-off driveway to the the main entrance of the building, which is where my mouse is. Uh it's a twelve-foot-wide driveway, so it's intended just for short-term or very short-term drop-offs. Things such as FedEx, UPS, Mail, Uber, um that type of, that's the intended use. The main entrance of the building is about five feet higher in elevation than Turhune Road. Uh so in order to provide ADA access, we do have a switchback ramp that uh enters from the drop-off lane and loops around towards the main entrance and patio area. Uh we also have a port-cocheer over this area of the entrance drive for rather protected uh areas. To the left of the main entrance door, we we do have some short-term bicycle parking racks uh to hold six bikes. And then we have a secondary ramp and stairway that leads to a uh bicycle storage room within the building. Uh this would be considered a a long-term bicycle storage facility uh for the residents, and it would hold up to forty-three bikes. Moving along, we do propose three flagpoles that near this front entrance. So we have uh two twenty-five-foot-high poles and a forty-foot pole. They're located between a a tiered um retaining wall that we're proposing here. Uh this allows us to step the grade up to the building and provide landscaping on each tier for a much nicer aesthetic. Also, along Turhune Road, we are proposing uh parallel parking spaces. So we have a total of eleven spaces. There's two in front of the main entrance and nine uh to the left. And those would be counted towards the the site parking count. Um and that's per the redevelopment plan that allows us to to count those spaces. Uh most likely, we we foresee these being used mostly by visitors uh in shorter-term stays. Making our way down to the end of the property, we're also providing some improvements to the new intersection. Uh so we would actually be constructing this as a raised intersection. So it's about three inches higher than the existing Turhune surface. That's in order to but provide a safer crosswalk. Uh this crosswalk here would be both pedestrians and bikes. And because it's a mid-block crossing, it makes it much safer if we can have traffic slowed down as much as possible, and the raised crosswalk helps to achieve that. Uh we also have a a splitter islands uh to further reduce speed leading up to this intersection. Uh that would be mountable curb, so it's not gonna prohibit uh larger trucks from driving over it. And then lastly, for even additional safety, we are providing uh solar-powered flashing beacon pedestrian signage uh at the crosswalk with push buttons and audible sound. Uh the bike lane extends through this intersection as well. And then it also makes a right turn into our our site. Uh as we get to this intersection of the site, we do have our second sculpture area. Uh this is larger than the the first one that was on Harrison Street over here. Uh it features a sculpture base, which would have uh uplighting on it. Uh the sculpture design would be in collaboration with the town, uh as I mentioned, and as the redevelopment plan mentions. Uh additionally, this area, we have permeable paver patio area. And then we have stone seat walls around the perimeter. Uh this is a a tiered seat wall, which would allow people to sit uh if there's a small event or gathering in this area. For pedestrian access into the property, uh it would route through this area. Uh there are stairs on the left here, which is the shortest path. But due to the elevations on the site, we we did provide a another switchback ramp here which runs between the the seat wall levels. Uh and that would be fully ADA compliant with handrails as necessary. The bike path in this section is is two-way. It's it's a feet wide. Um so it's a little wider than the the one-way sections, and this continues all the way through the property from Turhune leading up to the shopping center. Uh it generally parallels the new road. Let's zoom out a bit. But we did incorporate some some winding into it, which gives the ability to add some more visual interest with landscaping in the larger green spaces. Uh the pedestrian walkway continues through this area as well, which is our linear park. Uh and makes the connection to the shopping center uh and Grover Park as well. Uh then the new road by others would be in accordance with RSIS. We we changed the width from our original twenty-seven feet to twenty-eight feet. Uh that gives it two ten-and-a-half-foot-wide um lanes as well as a parallel parking lane. Uh there would be ten spaces located on the opposite side of the new road. Um I do want to mention, back to Turhune, like a lot of the improvements we are making to the streetscape have one goal in mind, which is to to really reduce the travel speed along this road. Uh the town did reduce it to twenty-five miles per hour over the last year or two. But I think with the with these further improvements narrowing the road, uh we did reduce the lane width to eleven feet on the the lane on our side, and that should act as a way of reducing the traffic speed even further. Uh as we move to the southern end of the site, we do have the the public dog run area, uh which features areas for large and small dogs. I'll get into more detail on that on my next exhibit, which I'll talk more on the the public improvements. As we get into the property, uh we are providing a hundred and fifty-two spaces uh on-site for the residents. This, in combination with the eleven spaces parallel parking, uh gets us to a hundred and sixty-three spaces. Uh the hundred and sixty-three spaces is the requirement based on the redevelopment plan for this property, uh and that's based on the number of units. So we are meeting that. There is a RSIS parking requirement, which is higher than the redevelopment plan. So we would need a de minimis exception uh to provide the one sixty-three, where RSIS requires uh two hundred and thirty-eight spaces. And the we feel that the the amount in the redevelopment plan was more suitable for this property based on its location uh with the close proximity to the shopping center, and then also the the bicycle and walking uh opportunities. So the proposed parking ratio is one point three spaces to one. Um that includes six uh handicap expressible spaces as well, with two of those being van-accessible, so that's that's um in accordance with ADA regulations. Uh within the parking lot, we are providing electric vehicle charging stations uh in accordance with the New Jersey law that recently came online. Uh with that law, you're required to provide fifteen percent of your required spaces with EV chargers, uh which equates to twenty-four spaces for this property. And it's a percentage of those, five percent of the total, must be installed with initial construction. Um so we are providing fifteen spaces along this row of parking uh near the building entrance with the first phase of construction, so that that exceeds that five percent. with the first phase of construction, so that exceeds that five percent. And then we have additional spaces proposed along the opposite aisle of parking. And that gets us to a total of twenty seven EV spaces. So we are exceeding the the New Jersey law and its requirements. If any additional EV chargers were needed in the future, it is possible to add them, we've designed things in a way to make that as easy as possible. So we have, there's also these four ADA spaces, so another provision in the law is that at least I believe it's five percent of the total EV charger spaces must must be ADA compliant. So we're exceeding that by providing four total spaces. At the rear of the building here, we do have a secondary entrance, which will really act as the primary entrance for residents from the parking lot. There's a patio space outdoor outside the rear entrance, which also features a green roof on this portion of the building. We have a raised crosswalk that allows residents to walk across the parking lot with a path that leads to the shopping center for easy access to McCaffrey's. There is a small dog run for the residents in this area. And we provide a ADA compliant ramp wrapping around this dog run for ADA compliant route. To the right of this area, there is a another bicycle enclosure, which provides another thirty long term parking spaces for bikes as well as a utility pad area. So we have our electric transformers and generator, which we're anticipating to be a diesel generator, would be located in this area. It would be fully enclosed with six foot high metal privacy fencing. And there would also be significant buffer plantings around the outer perimeter to keep it out of view as much as possible. We, in accordance with any of the New Jersey noise regulations, if a sound enclosure is needed on the generator, it would be provided. And that would be determined prior to building permit submissions. And transformer noise that would also be in accordance with the noise regulations, although that should be achieved as these are being provided by the public utility company. The last feature I want to talk about on our site plan, we do have a trash and recycling enclosure building. It also features another twenty seven long term bicycle parking spaces. Those will be vertical stacked bike hanging on the two walls. And then there's also a shed area for storage of maintenance equipment. The design of this will be shown later on the architectural presentation, but it has been designed to to match the building. And also also features a green roof on top of it. Pickups would occur. It could be either rear or front loaded. We have a concrete pad in front of the enclosure, which does have gates on the front. And it also doubles as a potential loading zone for move ins and move outs of the residents. That would be coordinated with management, so it doesn't overlap with trash pickup schedules, which we anticipate to be twice a week for trash and once a week for recycling. That could be adjusted as necessary, it would be a private hauler. If the residents generate more trash and recycling, it could be increased in as necessary. There's a trash room in the building with a compactor and maintenance would roll out the dumpsters for on pickup days for into the enclosure.
Thank you, Mr. Sefeli, let's move on to the public improvements.
Sure, just one last thing here, we do also have a car share parking spaces. So that would be something like a zipcar service that could be utilized, reducing the need for residents to own cars if they're not driving a lot. So the next exhibit I have here is sheet twelve of, or I'm sorry, thirteen of thirty seven. This is a public betterment exhibit showing some of the the public betterment improvements that we're proposing here. The aerial map in the center of the screen has several highlighted areas, these are things I'm going to get into a little bit more detail on. So the the cyan area here is the the road improvements that we talked about, so the streetscape and roadway improvements. There's the first sculpture area that we talked about, located on Harrison. And then there's also a the portion of the sidewalk that goes beyond the right of way, which would be provided with an access easement. Moving into the main sculpture area or the larger sculpture area, we do have a rendered isometric view, so you can get a better idea of how this would look. The design has really been done in a way to take cues from the building. So we wanted it all tied together, even though it's not part of the building. And it also ties into those tiered retaining walls that run along Turhune. We have significant landscaping along the tiered walls and also on on top of this stone seat wall. And that helps to buffer the onsite parking from the public's view. You could see the three tiers, there's a little grass area on this upper tier. And then you can also see the handicap ramp and stairs. The sculpture base is shown at the bottom, which again, like I said, would have uplighting. All pavers in this area are porous pavers, which helps us to achieve our stormwater management goals, which we'll get into a little bit later. And then we also see the two way bicycle lane. So this this area really acts as a gateway into the development. It's the first area that the public would really see as they're moving through the site. The next public feature would be the linear park. Let me zoom out a bit. So the linear park's really broken into two areas. The the southern area features a playgrounds for the two to five year olds, which would have two pieces of equipment, it'd be a swing set and a playgrounds. The playground shown here is just representative image, it's not the actual one that was proposed, but it's similar in size and scale. And then the swing set would both be set on safety surfacing as required for fall zone protection. The whole playground would be enclosed by a decorative metal mesh fencing, which is important here as we are in fairly close proximity to the the roadways and parking lot. That would be fully landscaped on the interior as well. Making it a little bit more aesthetically pleasing. There's entrances from both ends, so from the south and the north gated entrance ways. And then there's also benches within the park for for some seating area. The second portion of the linear park is more of a plaza gathering type area. So we have a paver patio area with shade trees over it for sun protection. It's fully landscaped around the perimeter and then there's tables and chairs and benches for seating. There would also be typical site furnishings throughout the property, things like trashy tentacles and benches as well as ballard lighting for the low level walkways. The ballard lighting in this area also features electrical outlets built into it, so people could plug in when they visit the park. So between these two areas, we also have a shade structure, which should be a cantilevered pergola system with some benches below just for additional sun protection. So I took, when designing this area, it took some inspiration from some of the parks I saw when I visited Paris a few years ago. They have a lot of parks like this where there's tree cover over the the plaza areas, so you could just sit back, relax and either read a book or have a picnic. The last public amenity I'm going to focus on here would be the the dog run at the adjacent to Grover Park. So this features two separate areas, so there's a larger dog area on the outside. It's approximately thirty three hundred square feet. And it does feature an agility course, which provides some ramps, tunnels, pedestals and other equipment. There would be benches in the in this area as well, and also leash posts and waste stations. The smaller area would be geared more for the smaller dogs, that's about eleven hundred square feet, with similar agility course features. There are multiple entrances into the dog area. At the top here, we have a fully enclosed section, which would allow for easy leashing and unleashing. And it has direct access into either of the the sections for large and small. And then there's a secondary access point down here. I'm going to move on to my next exhibit. So this is a site circulation exhibit and it's sheet fourteen of thirty seven. On on this map, I'm highlighting some of the general site circulation. We do show fire truck movements through the property using a forty seven foot long truck. That was the dimension provided by the fire department, so we have full access behind the building. We also show typical thirty foot box truck moving through this drop off area, which would be representative of a UPS FedEx truck. And then we show a trash pickup, which I mentioned could be either front or rear loading. So the the red hatched areas on here are the parking spaces that would be dedicated to the residents and visitors. So we have the parallel and standard. The EV spaces are hatched with the lightning symbol on them towards the center of the site. And then the ADA spaces are shown in cyan. Car share spaces are this darker purple patch. And then the other purple hatch would be all of our ADA compliant walking routes through the property. So you can see it has pretty good coverage throughout the site, providing access, ADA access for all the public amenity spaces from the building. Last thing on here, we do have the bicycle paths hatched in green, which is along the frontage of the property as well as along the the new road. Bicycle parking spaces, we have short term and long term, as I mentioned. There's a requirement in the ordinance for bicycle parking. It does require ninety nine spaces of long term bicycle storage, which includes covered or fully enclosed spaces. We are exceeding that requirement, we're providing a hundred long term spaces, which gives us one extra space, which could be potentially used by an employee. We also have a requirement of forty six short term parking spaces for bikes. We're also exceeding that, we're providing fifty two. And those are pretty well spread out throughout the property, given various locations for people to park temporarily. A lot of that is focused around the public areas where we see more short term stoppage happening. Our our traffic engineer is going to talk next, but there's a few comments I wanted to touch on first that were in the the traffic review letter we received. We can generally comply with all the comments, but there was a few that we chose not to or could not completely achieve. The first comment was number five, which asked us to consider adding an eighteen inch wide striped buffer for the bike lane on Turhune Road between the parallel parking spaces and the bike lane. We chose not to do that because we're really trying to limit impervious coverage wherever we could. And we also reviewed the NACTO documentation. And that that recommended really a minimum of twelve feet combined for parking and bike lanes. And that's what we are providing here. Comment number eleven in the letter asked us to consider making the bike path through the property slightly wider from eight feet to ten feet. And to use it as a multi-use path for bicycles and pedestrians. We really chose not to do that because we wanted the walkway to have more winding to it and also give the opportunity to walk through the park more than around it, to get more use out of the area. The last comment was number fifteen, and that was just asking us to relocate a pedestrian crossing warning sign. So ahead of this intersection, the raised intersection, we have our solar powered flashing signs at the intersection itself. But ahead of the intersection, we have a warning sign of pedestrian crossing. So it was asking us just to move it further to the east. But we really could not do that as we have the parallel parking in that direction. So we moved it as far as we could where it would still be visible from passing cars. So now I'm going to move on to our grading and drainage plan. This is an updated version of what was submitted, which reflects the comments in the various review letters. And it's sheet number fifteen of thirty seven in the exhibit package. So one of the the main goals here, as it is on most sites, we really want to maintain existing drainage patterns on the property. So we did that by placing the building along the ridge, so everything still really drains away from the building in the existing directions. We also want to make sure that we provide ADA accessible routes from all building entrances and to the public amenity spaces, which really requires us to provide maximum grades on sidewalks of five percent. And then also max grades on ADA spaces, parking spaces, up two percent in any direction. So we have incorporated that, those percentages into our design here to provide as much ADA access as possible. We do have that one stairway, but we provide a ramp to bypass it. And then we also do have several retaining walls throughout the property. Some of them are more decorative in nature along the frontage, where we chose to tier them instead of having a single wall. This gives it much nicer look and also eliminates the need for railings as there's smaller drops and allows landscaping to be placed between. In terms of stormwater management, we know that's a very important thing in Princeton, as as it is all throughout the state. The site is a major development as we're disturbing more than an acre, as well as adding more than a quarter acre of impervious surface and motor vehicle surface. So being a major development, we're required to meet water quantity, quality and recharge requirements set forth by the NJDEP rules, as well as providing low impact development and green infrastructure. Green infrastructure is one of the newer requirements in the regulations, and we have incorporated that into our design here. So the first requirement is meeting water quality reductions. So we're required to reduce the total suspended solid from stormwater runoff by eighty percent. In order to do that, there's various measures we can utilize that are approved by DEP. On this property, that the main source of treatment is porous paving. So we do have porous paver parking spaces within the entire parking lot. That would filter the runoff through the stone voids between the pavers. Then goes through a another stone course into a a stone storage bed below. The asphalt along the driveline is standard asphalt, but we do extend the stone storage area below it, so it acts as as if it's part of the porous paving system. We do send less than three times the area of the porous paving itself to these paver areas, which is in accordance with DEP regulations. And then additionally, we do have the porous pavers within the park area as well as the sidewalk along Turhune. The new road would be porous asphalt versus pavers. And that that functions then pretty much the same way, filters runoff through the surface course, which is open grained asphalt. That's in accordance with NJDOT requirements or standards. Due to the poor soils on the property, with really no ability to infiltrate or provide recharge, we did have to utilize an underdrain system under the porous paving. This would allow water to have a way off of the property. But we are able to control the flow off due to having outlet control structures. Lastly, in terms of water quality, we have another level that we are providing on top of just the the provable porous paving. So we have several bio retention basins, which are shown in green on this plan. Those provide another eighty percent TSS removal. So when you combine the two in series, in reality, and most areas on the site were achieving closer to like ninety five percent TSS removal. So it's exceeding the requirement. The bio retention basins are vegetated bottom with a soil media that's intended to serve for filtering of the runoff. The vegetation also utilizes some of the water to survive, so it's all water tolerant species that we're proposing in there. And those are also under drains. And then they discharge with an outlet control structure in each basin. In terms of water quantity, we are required to provide reductions of the peak runoff flow from the property to each watershed. to each watershed. So I mentioned, we have our one watershed to the south, which drains to the shopping center in Grover Park. And then a watershed to the north that drains to Turhune and Terry's Brook. We have to reduce the two year storm, which is about three point three inches of rain over twenty four hours by fifty percent. The ten year storm gets reduced by twenty five percent and the hundred year by twenty percent. We are exceeding most of these reductions. The the two years always the tough one to to hit. But we do exceed on the the ten and hundred year storms within both watersheds. And that's through the use of the porous paving, fire retention, and also undergrounds, open bottom basins that take some of the roof runoff from portions of the building. Other portions of the building do have green roofs and then they drain into the fire retention. We didn't account for the green roofs in our calculations, just to give a little bit of conservativeness to our cows. But they would provide obvious benefits on both quality and quantity. One of the things that we ran into was we really wanted to and per the recommendation of the the stormwater reviewer, we want to limit our flow to the shopping center parking lot. Even though it does flow there today, it flows there as sheet flow currently. So the the site drains over the entire length versus a point discharge. So originally we had discharges directly to there. We eliminated that by proposing an interceptor that collects the outflow from each basin. And we now run it further downstream of the McCaffrey's parking lot to an inlet that's along the curb line. This is much safer and minimizes the risk of freezing during a winter from our runoff onto the parking lot. And also protects the building on their property because right now the drains in the McCaffrey's parking lot are kind of at the front door of of the of the shop. So it runs across the entire parking lot, which is not a great condition. So we'd be eliminating most of that. We do have some undisturbed lands around the perimeter that would still drain there, but significantly less than what gets there today. In terms of groundwater recharge, that's one of the requirements of the DEP rules. Being de-soil with no permeability, there's really no existing recharge occurring. So we're not required to provide recharge. And that with the underdrain systems that wouldn't allow recharge as much. Does allow whatever can get through, but that's pretty limited. One other benefit of the porous pavers that we're doing is they are lighter color than asphalt. So it'll help to reduce the heat island effects in conjunction with our landscaping that we're providing as well. So the the porous paving ends fire retention. These are considered small scale fire retention. So they all take less than two and a half acres drainage area. And they all meet the green infrastructure requirements of the rules. We would have a comprehensive maintenance and operation manual that would provide guidelines for the owner to maintain all the stormwater measures onsite. And that is required to be included within the deed for the property under the rules. We, in our response letter that we provided to the board, we did not address the comments from the latest review letter from SWM Consulting. We did receive that letter this week. And we can agree to comply with all the comments that remain in that letter. We don't foresee any issues and we'll work with them as a condition of approval.
Mr. Spelly, just one question on regarding stormwater. So is it your professional opinion that the plan incorporating all the changes that you outlined in your testimony meet all applicable DEP and Princeton stormwater management regulations?
Yes, we believe it definitely meets those regulations. It actually exceeds them. And that's really the goal here is we want to minimize downstream flooding. Acknowledging that there are increasing storm events occurring, higher intensity storms, we want to have some conservativeness built into our designs, even if the the regulations don't really require that.
Thank you. Let's move on to utilities.
Sure. Yes, I want to talk briefly on some of the utilities that we require for this building. We would have water service. So it'd be a fire service and a domestic water service that would tap into a main interhune road that enters in towards the front of the building. Backflow prevention for the water would be within the building. And we are providing also for new fire hydrants on proximity to the site. So we have two proposed hydrants on Turhune Road and two within the rear parking lot. That helps us to achieve the RSSIS requirement, which is hydrants within four hundred feet of any portion of the building along a roadway. So we are achieving that. And there's an additional hydrant out in North Harrison as well. In terms of sanitary sewer, we have a single connection for the building, which would be a lateral service runs out of the right side and taps into an existing main in North Harrison Street. So that's actually pretty straightforward. It's a short run. And the sanitary is quite deep there. So we don't foresee any issues. Electric service and telecom, we do have the generator and transformer in the rear. So we're envisioning that it would have a secondary service from that location into the building. And that would all be coordinated with the the public utility companies during construction. They they really drive the the design and locations of of those services. We do also have the overhead wires for the secondary service to the shopping center that would be maintained. Once the new road is constructed by others, it would have to be converted to be underground service as part of that work. We also have a gas service to the building. Our architecture team will get into why we need a gas service versus pure electric. But that comes in off of Turhune into the front as well.
Now, my next to landscaping, please.
We'll do. All right. So this exhibit here is sheet sixteen of thirty seven. It's a landscaping plan that's been updated to reflect all the various comments we've received. So we we do have a total of three hundred and twenty four trees being removed from the property with eight inch caliper or greater. Besides that, there's also fourteen trees that we found were dead or invasive, such as the tree of heaven, which should be removed as well. So at the end of the day, we are keeping thirty four trees. They are located in areas that showed on the the older aerials, so the the more mature trees on the property. We're keeping up all the ones that fall within the the dog area. Those would all be maintained. And those are some of the older ones, as well as as many as as possible of the buffer trees along the shopping center. And then the eight trees at the intersection. Those are quite large white pines. Based on the removals that we're needing to do, there are replacement calculations in the ordinance that would require us to provide three hundred and eighty four new trees. Initially, we were short on that in our original submission. But since receiving all the comments from the the town, we've greatly reduced or greatly increased the number that we're proposing onsite. We're now at three hundred and ninety two trees provided. So we're actually exceeding the replacement requirement all onsite. A lot of that was achieved by increasing the the number of buffer trees along the perimeter, which will serve a good purpose in buffering our parking from other areas. So we have a mixture of ornamental evergreen and deciduous trees proposed. It's probably hard to see on here, but it's essentially any area that's not parking lot where we're landscaping on this property. Includes foundation plantings around the building, trees throughout the parking areas along the streets. So the intent of our proposed landscaping is really to provide a diverse and native focused plant palette. We wanted to have seasonal interest on the property and also work together with the hardscaping and its angular features. Shade trees that we're providing on the site consist primarily of native species and provide an array of foliage color in the autumn months. Species that we're providing include American linden, swamp white oak, American hop hornbeam, black gum and Princeton elm trees, among others. We are providing that dense buffering along the perimeter of the shopping center as well as buffering our parking spaces. And that's a mixture of native evergreen and ornamental trees. That includes eastern white pines, American holly, eastern red cedar and sweet bag magnolias. Just to cup to couple, cover a couple of the species. The low level plantings we're providing along the buffers as well as behind the dog run to buffer the dog run from Grover Park. That would be additional evergreen plantings. They are planted two feet on center per the ordinance to provide a pretty thick buffer. The off street site, off street parking spaces, we feel are effectively screened from the public areas with the with these plantings. We're also minimizing lawn areas on the property, which reduces the need for additional watering or irrigation. We would probably have drip irrigation for some of the foundation plantings and throughout the park. But in the lawn areas, we don't really foresee any need for spray heads. Within the fire retention basin, we do have a standard meadow mix, which is water tolerant species. They tend to attract pollinators such as the bees. So all in all, the the proposed landscaping ties together with the building well, gives a strong sense of place to Turhune Road streetscape improvements with the the terrace walls and rows of diverse vegetation with different colors. There's a significant number of high quality plantings proposed around the building perimeter. That includes shrubs, ornamental grasses and perennials. And that's all shown in further detail. We have our plant schedule on the plan. It gives quantities and the locations are all shown. Additionally, we'd have typical site furnishings like benches, trash receptacles, fencing, bike racks. We envisioned those to all be metal and and likely painted black. That's it for the landscaping. And now I'm going to get into our lighting design. So this is exhibit seventeen of thirty seven. It's our lighting plan, which has been updated. We switched out the fixtures from the original design. We wanted something that better matches the building fixtures. So that's what we went with. It's a more, a little bit more of a modern style, which you'll see matches the building. So we have a combination. We have pole mounted light fixtures, bollard lighting for some sidewalk areas in the park and wall mount fixtures in proximity to the building. We don't exceed fourteen feet on any of these fixtures, which is the the height limitation in the ordinance. So we are meeting that. And we're proposing to use all energy efficient LED fixtures. I believe most of them would be, or most or all of them would be considered dark sky. So they're all downward pointing for minimizing spillage and and light pollution. We chose to use four thousand Kelvin light temperature, which is a a neutral white. That's really the recommended temperature for facial recognition at nighttime. So we went with that. And as I mentioned before, the the bollards onsite do have electrical outlets, which would be GF CI receptacles for things such as charging and within the park areas. Our light levels, we we do achieve one point five foot candles on our parking lot areas average. That's exceeding the IES standard and provides a well lit environment that is safe and secure for residents in the parking areas. On the sidewalk areas, we're a little bit higher at two point one foot candles. And given the the public nature of some of the areas, we felt that was a suitable light coverage. All all lighting would be timer compatible or and or photocell compatible for automatic dusk to dawn lighting with the potential for motion sensors as well. The dimming of the lights is helpful to reduce energy usage in the late night hours. If that's something that the town would be interested in. So that concludes my direct testimony on civil engineering for this project, the Alice.
Thank you, Mr. Spelly. That was very thorough and comprehensive.
No, no, sir. Tom, Tom, that was very thorough, comprehensive and quite long. I know I could use a break. I know your court reporter could use a break. It's ten minutes to nine. So at this point, can we take?
Fair enough.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion. Let's take ten and be back at five, five minutes to nine. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And Mr. Latizia, I see you're still here.
Yes.
To Latizia. Oh, thanks, Karen.
Yes, welcome back. I now call Corey Chase.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Mr. Chase, please give your full name and business address, please.
Certainly. It's Corey Chase, C O R E Y. Last name is C H A S E. Principal with the firm Dynamic Traffic located at two forty five Main Street in Chester, New Jersey.
Madam Chair, Mr. Chase has testified previously before this board as a traffic engineering expert. So I, unless you want me to, I do not need to go through his qualifications.
But we've talked to you before and we accept them again.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Chase, you are familiar with the site, correct?
I am, yes.
And what was your role in connection with this project?
Our role was to prepare a traffic impact study to analyze the pre and post development traffic impacts of the Alice as well as to work with Mr. Seffeli on reviewing the onsite circulation, site access and proposed parking supply. Pulled up on my screen, page twelve of thirty seven, which is the site plan rendering that Mr. Seffeli previously presented. Just to refresh the board's memory, the primary vehicular access to the Alice will be provided via a right turn in, right turnout driveway along North Harrison Street as well as a full movement driveway, which will be located along the proposed new roadway. The proposed new roadway will intersect Turhune Road just to the east of Thanet Road. There are also significant site furniture improvements along both their Turhune and North Harrison Street frontages, which include the addition of bike lanes, sidewalk installation, ADA pedestrian upgrades, as well as the provision for on street parking along their Turhune Road frontage. As Mr. Seffeli mentioned, the new road intersection with Turhune Road will be an elevated intersection with pedestrian crossings on the south, east and west sides of the intersection. We'll also be proposing solar pedestrian warning beacons to provide advanced warning for vehicles vehicles traveling along Turhune Road of the pedestrian crossing maneuvers. We did prepare a traffic impact study, which was previously submitted to the municipality. It was dated October twentieth, two thousand twenty one. That, as I mentioned, provided a pre and post development analysis along the adjacent roadway network and the impacts of the Alice. Utilizing data published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers in the Trip Generation Manual, which is the national and state recognized standard for developing traffic projections. We took a look at the weekday morning and weekday evening peak hours, which is consistent for residential development. Given the proximity to the adjacent shopping center, we also took a look at the Saturday midday peak hour as well to see the the impacts of the residential development on the adjacent roadway network with consideration of the shopping center development located to the south. Based on the proposed hundred and twenty five units, the Alice is projected to generate a maximum of fifty nine trips during those three peak hours. That equates to approximately one additional trip on the adjacent roadway network every minute during the peak hour. And to give the board an idea, excuse me, as to that level of traffic generation, the Institute of Transportation Engineers and the New Jersey Department of Transportation have set a threshold of one hundred additional trips during a peak hour. It's being a significant increase in traffic. So we're approximately sixty percent of that threshold for a significant increase in traffic. So strictly looking at it from a numerical standpoint, the Alice would not generate a significant traffic increase on the adjacent roadway network. We did, however, prepare a pre and post development analysis of the adjacent signalized intersection of North Harrison Street and Turhune Road as well as the site access point along North Harrison Street and the new road intersection with Turhune Road. As part of the background traffic on the adjacent roadway network, we also took into account for adjacent area developments. The Pearl and Avalon Bay residential developments, as well as the town home development, which is located directly to the west of the subject property, adjacent to the proposed new road, as well as the reoccupation. As well as the reoccupation of uh vacant office space, which is currently located along Thanet Road. As well as the redevelopment of residential units within the Princeton Shopping Center. And that was all factored into the background traffic on the adjacent roadway network. And then we prepared a a comparison to the additional traffic generated by the Alice. Uh, the resulting levels of service indicate that there's no degradation in the overall level of service during either of the peak hours at the adjacent signalized intersection. So the adjacent signalized intersection of North Harrison Street and Terhune Road will continue to operate at the same overall level of service with and without the development of the Alice. The proposed subject property driveways, again, the right in, right out driveway along North Harrison Street. As well as the new road intersection, which are who rode are calculated to operate at acceptable levels of service during all three peak periods. So.
Mr. Chase, it's Turhune Road. I just wanted to let you know that.
My apologies, Turhune Road.
That's okay.
The, again, the intersections are calculated to operate at acceptable level of service during each of the peak periods. Uh, not a significant increase in traffic and no detrimental impacts on the adjacent roadway network. Uh, as Mr. Sefeli mentioned, we are applying, proposing a compliant parking supply uh with the redevelopment plan. Where a hundred and sixty-three spaces are required, a hundred and sixty-three spaces are proposed as part of our development. We're also providing twenty-seven electric vehicle charging spaces onsite, which exceeds the requirement of twenty-four electrical vehicle charging spaces. Uh, we're, in addition, we're providing eight car share spaces, which again is an added amenity for potential tenants of the facility and that they will not be required to have their own vehicle onsite and can potentially utilize a car share vehicle in lieu of having an additional vehicle on the adjacent roadway network. Uh, as Mr. Sefeli mentioned, there's also a proposed pedestrian connection to the adjacent shopping center, which again supports the pedestrian and bicycle interconnectivity that we're proposing as part of our development to the adjacent roadway network, to the adjacent amenities to the to the Alice. Uh, it's really done in a sense to uh reduce the reliance on vehicles along the adjacent roadway network and encouraging the walkability and pedestrian access to and from the development, as well as the bicycle access to and from the development. Uh, again, not a significant increase in traffic on the adjacent roadway network and no detrimental impacts as a result of the redevelopment of the subject property. The access, the onsite circulation has been designed to provide safe and efficient access to all areas of the site. Mark, that's all I had for direct testimony. Uh, I'd be happy to hit any points that you think that I may have missed as part of that.
Uh, just one question, Mr. Chase. Uh, did you have a chance to review the traffic engineering uh review letter of Vicoman Associates?
I did. I did have the opportunity to review Mr. McGinnis's uh March nine, two thousand twenty-two review letter. Mr. Sefeli hit three items within that review letter uh that he provided commentary on that we would not be in compliance with, but the remaining items in the review letter, we are amenable to comply with.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chase. I now uh call uh Harry Osborne and Jess, Jasper Ryberg. Madam Chair, do not be concerned. Uh, only one of these gentlemen is going to testify, but there's a reason I'm calling both of them up. Uh, first, uh, let's start with uh Mr. Osborne. Uh, please uh provide your full name and business address.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Harry Osborne. It's O S B O R N E. I go by Ted. Uh, my address is Three Mountain View Road, Warren, New Jersey. That's PSNS's corporate headquarters. I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey since nineteen eighty-seven. Licensed in sixteen other states and testified in um many jurisdictions and townships in New Jersey, including Princeton, but that was twenty-five years ago, I think. I've been at PSNS for four years and I am the principal architect at the firm. And I have reviewed, signed and sealed the architectural drawings that were prepared by my colleague, Mr. Jasper Ryberg, who you'll now meet.
Uh, Madam Chairman, I offer Mr. Osborne as an expert in architecture.
Thank you. We we accept your qualifications.
I I now will introduce uh Mr. Jess, Jasper Ryberg. Mr. Robert, please uh provide your full name and business address, please.
Uh, my name is Jasper Ryberg and I'm also working out of Three Mountain View Road, Warren, New Jersey.
And can you briefly uh provide uh your educational professional background, please?
Um, I have an engineering background from Sweden and I got my Bachelor of Architecture in two thousand two from Sirek, uh Southern California Institute of Architecture located in Los Angeles. I have twenty years of experience in the architectural and design industry. I'm currently employed with PSNS Architecture and Engineering. Um, I've been acting as a director of design there for the last ten years where my role has been focusing on the residential market. My team and my team and I have designed approximately about two million square feet over the last three years. Um, all residential. And um my responsibility as a team leader is to coordinate all the disciplines uh within the team.
And you had the responsibility to design the building that's the subject of tonight's application under the supervision of Mr. Osborne?
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, I offer on Mr. Ryberg as a, as an expert in architecture.
Uh, we accept your qualifications. Did I miss the, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to.
Sure.
Follow up, did I, did I miss the part about being licensed in the state of New Jersey?
No, you didn't. Uh, Mr. Ryberg is not licensed in the state of New Jersey. That's why I had Mr. Osborne come up and be sworn in. Cause Mr. Ryberg works under the supervision of a licensed New Jersey architect, and that's Mr. Osborne.
Okay. A- and I think that we have um confronted this exact question before and accepted his qualifications. Um, and I'm, I'm willing to do so again. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, Mr. Uh, Rigan might have a comment about it.
Um, Chair, members of the board, it's uh for purposes of uh qualifying uh someone as a, you know, an expert in any field, in in this instance, architecture. It's not required to have a license um anywhere in the in the country, let alone in New Jersey. Uh, as long as you're, as long as you, as long as you accept their qualifications. Um, you know, based on educational and professional background and experience.
Okay, Frank, that's helpful. Thank you. Go right ahead.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, Mr. Ryberg. Uh, I believe you have a number of exhibits uh to present. And can you start with your first one, please?
Yes. This, uh, can you all see my screen? Okay?
Yes, we can. Uh, please identify this and the number of the uh slide, please.
Okay. Um, Madam Chair, members of the board and members of the community, thank you for taking the time this evening to listen to our presentation. I promise I'll make this as brief as possible. Um, I I gotta share a couple of things, though. I recently turned fifty and I guess you reminisce a little bit more than typically and I moved to Princeton uh back in uh nineteen ninety-eight up on uh Mount Lucas Road. Having spent the last twenty-five years in the community, driving past this site on a daily basis, always hoping that something's gonna happen with it. Um, I feel very fortunate um to have this opportunity to make an impact in in our community and produce a building that my friends and uh close family can enjoy. The team and I have spent a long time developing this project and I hope this shows in our exhibits. Um, prior to getting into the actual presentation, I would like to set the stage a little bit. Um, when when companies came to us with this opportunity, we were very excited, of course. Uh, David and Steve, who you heard from before, told me that this building has to be something special. Um, this will be our flagship uh in New Jersey. Um, this community is well educated and has high standards and that's why we like, love to live here. Now let me share a little bit of background to the actual design itself. Um, when companies asked for a modern um and contemporary building, a building that would be timeless uh with low maintenance, um, the design had to respond to the new world after the pandemic. In in addition, they wanted to minimize the carbon footprint. Um, they wanted a strong visual appearance at the intersection uh of Terhune and North Harrison, but also minimize the view of parking. Um, they also requested a uh variance free application and I think believe we do have one here. Um, I will now present um um a number of exhibits, the number eighteen through thirty-three, and all these exhibits have been prepared by myself and our team at PSNS with the supervision of um uh Harriet uh Ted Osborn. Um, so this is exhibit eighteen or thirty-seven. It's called Aerial Architectural Site Plan. Um, this project is located um on uh North Harrison and Terhune Road. It's a four-story residential building, approximately a hundred fifty-five thousand square feet. It's including a small roof deck as well. Um, it has hundred twenty-five units, um where twenty-five uh you uh those units are designated for affordable uh component. The building height is fifty feet to the roof, um and uh it has overrun structures, just three of them, um but they're all less than fifteen feet high. Uh, the construction type is a five A, uh basically a wood framed construction, very typical. Um, the building has an emergency diesel generator in the back of the sides towards the parking uh of the Montgomery of of the shopping center. The building is also fully sprinkled, uh NFP thirteen. And it's also divided uh in three parts by two, two-hour self-supporting firewalls. And I will uh uh identify these uh in the next exhibit. A a little side note, um when we were part of the selection of the contractors, um safety was top criteria, especially fire safety during construction. Um, this was something that was um current at the time and should always be. Um, but uh the EMR um experience modification rating of our contractor selected is zero point seven, uh which is very low. Um, one point zero is the benchmark in the industry. Uh, but I I wanted to bring that up because it's been an important part of our, in our project. Um, currently we're designing this, but the building is designed uh to an energy star and zero energy ready home certification. Uh, the building has a high-performance building envelope and triple glazing windows in line with passive house design criterias. The roof of the building is equipped with photovoltaic panels. And the apartment units are equipped with high efficiency heat pump HVAC with ERV systems for fresh air changing. I am gonna yeah, on this uh aerial site plan, I will just point out the um, the the entrances of the building. I think you've got a pretty thorough uh review of the sites and uh its um components. So I will, in the interest of time, uh focus on the entrances. Prior to reviewing uh this exhibit, I would like to point out that the Terhune Road is at the the top of the plan and Harris, North Harrison Street is on the left side of the plan. Um, I will uh also point out that all these exhibits have been presented uh by the team at PSNS. On this slide, we highlighted the uh the two uh main entrances, the north entrance and the south entrance. Um, we also have two egresses uh out of the stair towers uh where indicated with blue arrows. And then we have a secondary uh entrance and egress uh on the back of the building as well. Uh, the north entrance, uh the drop-off area is undercover of a port cochere, cascading soft light for the arrivals and the port cochere sets up the symmetry with a grand entrance stair in the center that leads up to the five-foot raised entrance patio. On the east end of the uh port cochere is a recessed bike rack as well as an entrance for the building. Um, bike storage and self-repair. This this secure entrance will also act as the package delivery to the adjacent package room. On the west side of the entrance, the building name is highlighted by low landscaping, minimal lighting. Directly adjacent is the ADA ramp that meanders uh up to the front door. And a lot of this was touched by Mrs. Sefeli previously. Um, the south entrance uh will be the main entrance for the tenants. This is closest to the parking, bike racks and uh the dog recreation area, uh as well as the shopping center. And the patio by the back entrance is covered by a linear uh pergola, uh providing shade during the morning and midday sun. Uh, it also enclosed with a low masonry wall uh with some soft landscaping on top to buffer against uh parking and traffic. Uh, I will now move on to exhibit nineteen out of thirty-seven and it's called a first floor plan. The east wing of uh of this building is eighteen inches uh higher than the west wing um due to some rock formations below in this area. This building is also divided by full height, um two-hour fire uh walls. Um, they're masonry self-supporting walls and highlighted in the yellow dash lines on the plans. The lobby will have uh floor to ceiling glazing at the front uh to shower the space in natural light. This will be a space for waiting and greeting. On the west side of the lobby is oversigned overseen by the leasing office that has conference rooms for the tenants. Opposite, you will find the heart of the building with direct exterior access uh from the, for the utility rooms. Uh, this is also where the uh bike and uh package room is located. So that has a nice flow of whether you come in via the bike ramp or you come in through the entrance, you have all your mail in that location. Across the hallway, um it's a fully equipped pet spa with dual wash stations and drying accommodations. The pets also have their private entrance corridor that will take care of money pass. Um, this is also the location for the maintenance shop, uh trash and recycling. Along the back of the house, uh activities is a top-of-the-line fitness centers with private fitness rooms as well. Connecting uh the front and the back uh entrances is a gallery featuring an art exhibition from the local artists that when companies are developing relationships for it right now. It's to have a rotating exhibit ever so often. The gallery has a natural light from clear stories above. This diffuse light will also spill into the gathering areas. Um, the library is uh sheltered behind custom displays and shelving units with casual seating as well as enclosed private dining rooms. There is also an uh event area for small gatherings and um with a supporting pantry. Um, there is also an event, uh there's a, in the back area, there are private gaming and uh movie viewing areas. And all of these wonderful spaces available to all the tenants. Um, the lounge and the fitness center are both spilling out onto the patio through uh large double doors to connect the exterior and interior spaces as well. There are five uh different type of uh units in the building. Uh, we have one bedrooms uh in in the identified in pink, one bed plus den identified in blue and two bed uh two-bedroom apartments in uh highlighted in yellow and two bed plus dens uh in red. And finally, a three-bedroom option, uh there are, these are located on the second, third and fourth floor. I'll point that out later. Um, I also identified on this plan uh in blue dots, the uh proposed uh affordable unit locations. The the units are designed so that they're all adaptable to the ADA compliance. Another common denominator is that that all the units have oversight. Another common denominator is that all the units have oversized balconies. This was a feature that was the direct result of the pandemic. The units have a lot of natural light, but the majority of the light is either diffused by privacy devices or shaded by balconies. Each unit has efficient electric washer and dryer. Kitchen is equipped with dishwashers, and all the appliances are Energy Star rated. And more about this later in the sustainability testimony. Exhibit twenty out of thirty-seven, this is called the Second Floor Plan. All of the floors are very similar, only to varying in the core area. The second floor will have a children's room and some additional storage. The other unique feature on the second floor is the green roofs, highlighted over the amenity areas in light green color here. I also point out the three-bedroom apartments are located in the center of the building on all the floors.
And again, the blue dots.
The blue dots are also proposed. Exhibit twenty-one out of thirty-seven, typical third and fourth floor plan. Similar to the second floor, the third and fourth have the same unit layout. However, these floors have a co-working area or work-from-home area in the center of the core. This promotes the this promotes the tenants to work from home in a more comfort while minimizing their carbon footprint. I think it's also to get away from the kids for a couple hours that could help too.
You may have said this, Mr. Ryberg, are the finishes in the units the same, whether they're affordable or market?
Yes, all the units have the same finishes and appliances throughout.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Exhibit, exhibit then number twenty-two out of thirty-seven, roof plan. On the roof level, there's a roof deck accessed by the elevator core. This this area will have a variety of furniture setups for sun lounging, gathering, and relaxing. The roof deck will be controlled by the and maintained by the owners. The roof deck will also have two means of egresses to each stair tower, where the stair towers are hosting the area of refuge. In addition to all the rooftop mechanical units, we will also have photovoltaics spread throughout the roof, pending final layout, depending on all the roof penetrations. Okay, exhibit twenty-three out of thirty-seven is called Trash Recycling and Bike Shed. In the previous review letter, we were requested to provide a little bit more information, so we'll, we show that here right now. The trash recycling shed is incorporating both the covered bicycling bicycle racks, as well as a small storage for landscaping equipment. The shed is built with the same materials as the main building. The shed also features a green roof to enhance the view for the residents looking down in parallel to the sustainability benefits, of course. But we wanted to make all these smaller structures part of the whole campus, if you want to call it that. Exhibit twenty-four out of thirty-seven is called Bike Shed. And Mr. Sefeli touched on this previously. Again, we just included this per request from the review letter previously. The second enclosed bike store is located at the back entrance, as you probably recall, with the same features and material as the trash shed. All the bike storage also have supporting charging capabilities for ebikes and search. Exhibit twenty-five out of thirty-seven is called Materials and Sample Elevation. The exterior envelope is a high-performance envelope with materials that are mixed between light-colored stucco. I hold this up, it's a little bit hard to kind of see on screens. And the light-colored stucco in the sample elevation here is identified in a white color stippled. And we also have a dark stone veneer. It's a stacked stone look that's identified on the elevation plan in a darker shaded gray area, mainly at the base, but it does rise up now and then. And the third main material is a wood look aluminum panel that is kind of the light beige colored on the sample elevation. I also included an image of the of the grass areas, just an illustration that represents the green roof, and I think it ties in nicely with the rest of the materials. As mentioned before, these are all materials with low maintenance, and they will hold, hold up very well over time. The proposed roofing is a light-colored EPDM roof. Windows will be triple-glades, and each unit will have operable windows in addition to the balcony door. The windows will be aluminum-cladded PVC. And that is all the materials. After the upcoming sign exhibits, we will have a series of more perspective views as well. So this is exhibit twenty-six out of thirty-seven, called a monument sign. All building signage will be in accordance with the development plan. The two monument signs are located at the Harrison entrance, as well as the New Future Road entrance. The design itself is in line with the same design strategies and materials as the building. And the signage will also be softly lit at night. And you can see, we tried to pick up on the same design strategies and features of the building, incorporate that even in their monument signage, again, to kind of keep all the smaller structures on the site tied together. Exhibit twenty-seven out of thirty-seven. This is called Building Signage. The primary building signage are located on Harrison, North Harrison Street, and the Turhune Road at the top of the building. And you will see this in some other perspective views coming up. The secondary entrance sign will be located west of the entrance. The sign will have lighting and letters on logo. The exact logo and fonts are still being finalized, but this is the graphical representation of the sign, and we provided more dimensions as requested per review later, later as well.
Thank you, and maybe finally, Mr. Ryberg, you can show the board some different perspectives of this building that you have described.
I love to. I love to show this building for everyone. The building design parameters were driven heavily by the restrictions of the site, like Mr. Sefeli talked about earlier. The building has a void articulation in the center of the building to give it some hierarchy. The ends of the building have treatments to bookend the rhythm of the facade. The overall aesthetic incorporates vertical elements and variety of materials to reduce the visual impact of the building length. The base of the building has a continuous band on the first floor with a dark stacked stone veneer that grounds the building to meet the site. This base is rising up on the building randomly to be topped off with the corners. And this decorative corner is kind of like, highlights the meeting with the sky. This creates light-colored fields in between that breaks up the facade and gives some breathing space between the strong vertical elements. The stucco fields have a soft articulated joints aligning architectural elements and further breaking down the overall surfaces. In addition to having a variety of spacing in the building, it's also a series of different balcony configurations to furthermore create a variation in the facade. And that was previously, exhibit was twenty-eight of thirty-seven, and this is twenty-nine of thirty-seven. And this one is called Perspective North Harrison and Turhune Road. As mentioned earlier, all the balcony configurations are wrapped in a wood-looking aluminum panel to offer some warmth in the color palette. This wood-looking aluminum panel is also present at the ends and the entrances. Another design feature is the roof parapet varying both in height and in plane. This will beautify how the building meets the sky in an uneven fashion, much like how nature will do. Exhibit thirty out of thirty-seven, Perspective North Harrison Street. Furthermore, you can see that the building envelope has a push-pull throughout the building. This creates a natural shading of windows and balconies to a large extent. This also produces a depth in the elevation that varies with help of natural lighting conditions. So we try to simulate that here, you can see the different shading patterns depending on the sun location. Exhibit thirty-one out of thirty-seven, and apologize for my being a little bit repetitive. This one is called Perspective Turhune Road, Future Road. I also want to point out some of the site feature that has the same design language as the building. The corner of the site is rising up in steps to retain the earth, but also simulate the design features in the facade of the building. The hardscape stone walls are finished with landscaping, which will soften the edge and naturally shield the car parking from Turhune Road, and this was one of our big goals, both from the town and from, from wind as well. I see what is thirty-two out of thirty-seven, and this exhibit is called Aerial Linear Park. This is just another view how the building integrates with the site, and you can see how the site has been divided up into smaller components to bring the overall campus or the development down into a more of a human scale, and it works really well the way both our landscape architectures and civil engineering and architects work together, dividing this plot of land up. Exhibit thirty-three out of thirty-seven, and this will be my last exhibit. This one is called Aerial Back Entrance Trash and Bike Shed. In addition to the photovoltaics on the roof, we have green roofs located on the first floor amenity space on top of that, as well as green roofs on the trash shed as well as bike sheds. All these green roofs drain into nearby bio-retention compartments, so this has some great sustainability features, not just for good looks. This concludes my part of the presentation, and thank you again for taking the time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Ryberg. I now call our last witness Christina McPike. Ms. McPike, please provide your full name and business address, please.
Good evening, my name is Christina McPike, my address is thirteen fifty Broadway, New York, New York.
And you are affiliated with Win Companies?
Yes, I am Win Companies Director of Energy and Sustainability.
Can you briefly give the board some of your educational professional background, please?
Of course, happy to. I have ten years of experience overseeing and implementing energy efficiency, water conservation, and decarbonization strategies in the built environment. I've worked on several dozen projects following frameworks, including LEED, Energy Star, Enterprise Green Communities, and Passive House. I have significant experience working with local, state, and federal policymakers at the intersection of affordable housing and clean energy policy, and have spoken at numerous industry conferences and events, including the Department of Energy's Better Buildings Summit, NEEP's Electrification Conference, US Green Building Council's Green Build, New Building Institute's Green Building Getting to Zero Forum, among others, a member of the.
You're gonna have your testimony, thank you.
Okay.
That's, that's from the court reporter, I gather, is that correct?
Yes, that is, Madam Chair.
But and I can, I can just say that we accept your qualifications.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, we appreciate it, Madam Chair. So Ms. McPike, please provide at a highlight, high level some of the energy and sustainability elements that are incorporated into this new win project.
Of course, happy to, and again, I apologize if I speak quickly, we are trying to be brief here at the end of our testimony.
We do greatly appreciate, so.
I'll try to, I'll try to balance the two objectives. And as my colleagues have alluded to, Win has a longstanding reputation for sustainable real estate development. Every day as a company, we're tackling two crises, right, the housing crisis and the climate crisis together. We integrate sustainability best practices in everything we do, from ground-up new construction to deep energy retrofits, to managing energy use across our portfolio. And this commitment is demonstrated in our proposed plan for the Alice, which is going to set a high bar and be a great example for Princeton's sustainability objectives. More specifically, and as outlined on exhibit thirty-four of thirty-seven here, the building will be Zero Energy Ready Homes and Energy Star Multifamily New Construction certified, including the EPA's Indoor Air Plus certification. These green building certification standards require close attention to detail, not only from design development, but through construction and well into operations. And as such, we've engaged McGrann Associates to provide energy modeling early on in design, and they'll continue to be involved throughout construction as our Energy Star consultant and raider, providing contractor training, ongoing inspections, and verification and testing. Building design incorporates many passive design elements as well, focusing first and foremost on the building envelope, the most important aspect of really any building. We're going above and beyond energy code here to maximize continuous insulation, reduce air infiltration, minimize thermal bridging, and include extremely high-performance triple-glazed windows. The robust building envelope design drastically reduces the mechanical system energy loads, which we will meet with high-efficiency electric air source heat pumps for heating and cooling, which will be further enhanced by the building's heat pump energy recovery ventilation, or ERV, system, which circulates air continuously throughout the building, extracting stale and moist air from inside, capturing its waste heat and energy to then preheat or precool fresh filtered air that will be distributed throughout the building. Other design features include LED lighting with low lighting power densities and occupancy controls, Energy Star appliances, and unit heat pump, electric dryers, and a solar array to offset more than half of the building's electric flows. Next slide, exhibit thirty-five reiterates the third-party green building certifications that we're committed to pursuing as previously described. The building is also adaptable to evolving maturing technologies, including fifteen EV charging spaces. And interestingly, and I think impressively upsized, we've upsized the electrical capacity to support the future electrification of end uses, especially as the demand for EVs continues to increase. And just as important as delivering a good building is educating and encouraging its occupants to make sustainable decisions once they live there. The project's smart thermostats and low-carbon transportation options, including not only the EV stations, but also car sharing and bike storage, will help our residents maintain a small carbon footprint, which will be further supported through training and educational outreach offered by our management company. Next slide. In this rendering, my final exhibit thirty-six of the Alice is a great job showcasing all of the buildings beyond code energy commitments. Additional examples I haven't really yet touched on, features include the building's efforts to conserve water, which will do with water since labeled. Uh which will do with water since labeled low flow plumbing fixtures, which are in line with Leeds maximum credits and points for water efficiency. The Alice will use about half as much water than a similar, similar building would otherwise use. This exhibit also helps highlight that we're managing outdoor water through comprehensive stormwater management practices. This includes the green roof areas that you see here, previous pavement retention basins. As mentioned early in our presentation, we are committed to maximizing solar PV on our roof. At when we've developed nearly three megawatts of solar across our portfolio. The final layout and sizing is contingent upon further design development HVAC coordination, but at this time, we expect nearly a hundred and fifty kilowatts of solar PV at this building. As a long term owner and a property manager. We're invested in developing and maintaining a high quality and long lasting asset for our residents and for the broader community. We're considering how the Alice not only perform on day one, we don't hand over the keys and walk away. Um, but we're, we're, we're considering and planning this building for years five, twenty, fifty and beyond. Um, and with that, I thank you for the opportunity to present what I hope is pretty brief but coherent testimony, and I look forward to answering any questions you may have. Tom?
Thank you, Ms. McPike. Uh that completes our uh testimony. Just have one final exhibit, which I have the honor of presenting uh to the board. And this is a wrap up or or takeaways slide. It's slide thirty seven of thirty seven. At the outset, I noted that this development was special and different from your average apartment project, and I believe we have demonstrated that. Uh in our presentation. This uh project, which is going to be called the Alice, is an excellent example of public private partnership. Through the use of redevelopment and we list here all the benefits that this, that we believe this project will provide to the community. Uh the public linear park and the the dog runs, the public art sculpture areas and as well as the uh extension. Of a multi-use walkway path network. And uh as you just heard from Ms. McPike, uh there are numerous elements uh towards providing uh green development. And uh it's not only the building, but the the site as a whole through the use of perennial payment and green infrastructure, for example. And then finally, as you've heard a number of times through this presentation, uh the Alice is a fully as of right. Conforming project, both with the Harrison Turhune redevelopment plan and the Princeton Land Development Works. And with that, uh we rest our direct presentation. We're now available for questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um. Members of the board, um. Time to raise your hand for questions. I see Mr. Quinn already has.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I have three questions and I'll, I'll try to be quick and not make a speech before each one or after each one. First of all, very impressive presentation. Um, I think this is a, it's a. I'm sure that there will be disagreements on the design, but I think most of the choices here made here are are really solid choices. Uh my questions are, Mr. Sefeli referenced on Harrison Street, the what he called buffered bike lanes and. I, I just want to make sure that by buffered, he means the striping on the road. And uh a related question would be, would you consider protected? Some protected elements such as uh plastic bollards or something like that. The concern is that intersection and that road will be changing and I applaud all of the bike elements in here. It's just a quibble in a question.
I, I, I agree with that recommendation. I think it would provide additional safety. That's a, a good idea to put the uh plastic bollards within the striped area.
Great, well, well, tha- thank you. Uh with regard to the eleven parallel parking spaces that are going to be on Turhune. Do we know what the time limits, if any, will be uh for those parallel parking spaces or? That'll be left up to the municipality?
Uh I think because we are counting them in the building parking count, we weren't really envisioning time limits. Uh we, we do envision they would be used by mostly visitors, so it'd be shorter timeframes. Uh it's a little bit more safe and secure in the rear parking lot for, for overnight.
Yeah, I, I agreed and also as this is becoming our, this area is becoming our second downtown. If you might have to consider that in the future. I just wanted to get that on the record. And my, my third question had to do with exhibit twenty. I, I think this is for the, for the architect. On, on exhibit twenty, which is the second floor plan, um the affordable units. There's something, uh, there's an area marked trash outside of one of the affordable units. First of all, I'd point out that the affordable units are, are, one of them is right next to the elevators, which is. Uh less desirable location as anyone who's lived in a multi-unit uh structure knows. And I, I'm, the reason, my question is really, what is this, this area marked trash? It, is that? Are other residents going to be bringing trash to that area? And I'd also note that the janitor closet is. Outside of one of the affordable units too. So again, those are quibbles with a great design and the question here. Is uh what's that area marked trash uh outside the affordable unit? Again, I'm on slide twenty, the second floor plan.
Uh, Mr. Reiberg, uh can you uh put on your video, please? Can you, can you pull on slide twenty, please?
Yeah.
Uh, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
So I'm referring to uh the area across the hall from where the elevators are outside the affordable unit. Right, bring your cursor a little bit right in that area. There's an area marked trash. What, what is, is that a, is that communal trash? Are those wastepaper baskets?
This, this area is the um, the, the trash drop off. Uh it's, there's no trash in the place. Both the trash and recycling have shoots going straight down to the maintenance. So there's no. So there's no trash sitting in a, in a room or anything like that. And the trash uh drop off is off the corridor and um these two units here have their. Almost a private corridor and they're also overlooking the green roof.
Thank you. Thanks for answering the question.
Thank you.
And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Okay, great. Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I just had a, a question for the uh traffic consultant for Corey.
Yes, sir.
Um, so I understood you to be saying that you did take into consideration the traffic coming from. The various new developments, not just from this one and maintaining that the um. You know, the level of service was still satisfactory at Turhune and Harrison at that traffic signal. Um, I'm sure you also took into consideration that you remove or that the right turn. Traffic lane is being removed in order to provide for the bicycle, the buffered bike lane. So I just wanted to get you to. Maybe be a little bit more specific, like what is the current? Level of service at that intersection and what is the uh anticipated? Level of service uh with all the changes that we're seeing it coming along.
Certainly, that's a good question. So the overall level of service in the no build condition, so that's. Future traffic with consideration of the ongoing developments in the area, but without the Alice associated traffic. It's operating at overall level of service C during the AM and PM peak hours and overall level of service B during the Saturday midday peak hour. Uh those levels of service would be maintained in all three of those peak hours under the future conditions. So. Again, overall level of service C during the weekday morning and evening peaks and overall level of service B during the Saturday midday peak.
And did that take into account the change in the uh, the, the lane, the right lane on Harrison?
It, it unfortunately does not include that at this time. Uh, we will be revising the study to incorporate that as part of it, but based on the results of the analysis, I don't anticipate that would have a significant impact on the overall level of service.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. O'Donnell and then after Mr. O'Donnell, Mr. Tex Army.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, in the designation of the affordable units. Uh no matter how many times I counted, I'm only coming up with twenty four. Based on uh the, the blue dots or whatever other uh designation there's been in the materials we received. Uh and maybe perhaps the uh issue is that the, there's one slide that covers. Uh both the third and fourth floor. Is there a unit that is basically, you know? Are the, well, I guess first question is, are there any affordable units on the fourth floor itself? And can you recount for the discrepancy?
Uh, yes, um, you are correct. Um, in that uh there's a discrepancy, there, there are twenty five units. But there's a slight difference between the third and the fourth floor. Uh there are units on all floor levels.
Okay, uh how many units will be on the third and how many on the fourth? Affordable unit set is?
There are two on the fourth floor.
And four on, and five on the, and five on the uh.
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, I also did have a question about the connection. Uh the, I guess it's a proposed connection to uh the Princeton Shopping Center parking lot. From uh, I, there will not be a connection from the new road. Is that correct? But there, I believe that um. The engineer, Mr. Sefeli, said something about the possibility of connecting the, the driveway. Extension and would that then cut through uh that, that little green space and into the parking lot itself?
Uh, let me share my screen.
So you mean the roadway connection, not the drainage connection?
Right, exactly.
Am I on the right screen?
Yes.
Okay, uh, so there is this last piece that's outside of the existing right of way.
Yes.
Uh, that would be constructed by when as part of this development and that would make that final connection point um to the shopping center.
From, we, we, we have anticipated. Here, okay, all right. I'm sorry. I was, I was confused. I thought you meant extending uh the, the arm of the parking.
Oh, through this, yeah.
Through there.
Got it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so it'll make the bends. You're welcome.
Yeah, and just to build on that or follow up the, uh, my understanding is that that will be restricted to no truck traffic. Is that correct?
Yes, I should have mentioned that we are. Yep, okay, yeah, cuz all truck traffic today goes into the shopping center on its own. We don't need to accommodate it here.
Okay.
And since, I'm sorry, since we're on this uh slide, may I ask one more question?
Sure.
Uh, so there is the, the walkway from the uh, the entrance, the south entrance of the building, which, you know, the leads directly into the uh McCaffrey's parking lot. There, and I'm sure that people are going to be walking directly down uh through that, which, which is a pretty heavily trafficked aisle. There, is there? Any thought or any talk of, you know, putting in some kind of traffic calming measures, asking McCaffrey's or us in the shopping center?
Yeah.
People to do that?
Yeah, I think it does make sense to do at least like a striped crosswalk. Uh the benefit of this location, it is on the middle of the straight of, uh straight of way. So it gives a good sightline to the crosswalk. Uh, I'm not sure how heavily it would be used. Uh, I mean, I guess it will get a good amount of use though, being the, the closest.
I, I would imagine it would and uh, and yeah, as it is now, uh cars seem to just, you know, come around those curves because they're not used to anybody being there. I'm sure they'll get used to uh. To that after, you know, very quickly, uh but especially if there are going to be children living in uh, in the development. Um, it might be a good idea to have something.
Yep. I agree.
Totally agree with that. Anything else, Owen?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Zenon and then Nat Botticamer?
Yeah, I think uh what Owen just brought up, that kind of poses a tricky question because essentially. What you're gonna have is uh, or a point, because you're gonna have people. Kind of going straight into a, a park, crossing a, a road and then going straight into a parking lot, but I guess people are walking from their cars, so. I, I wonder, I mean, maybe a, a, a fix, I mean, I don't know if it's the perfect fix, but um potentially. You know, having a path uh a little bit to the right of that, which kind of could potentially turn into a path. Down to the median, or not a median, but there's like a kind of a green strip. Maybe the cursor.
Uh this year.
Yeah, yeah, so maybe kind of making a, a path there, but you know, I don't know. I don't, I, I can't really come up with a, an easy fix for that. Um, anyways, yeah, I, I guess my questions are um more towards sustainability of the building. Um, I do appreciate um all the efforts that were made towards um, you know, sustainability overall and in the building. I think that um, it, um, sorry, so I think that um, yeah, it like, uh, I, I, I think that it's, it's a pretty nice, you know, efforts. Um, one question I have is why um, the um, water heaters are not going to be electric and also why induction stoves are, aren't going to be used. Um, like as opposed to natural gas, so.
Ms. McPike, I think can answer those questions.
Yep, yeah, happy to answer both. Um, and it's a good question. At this point, the water heaters, it's a central domestic hot water plant, which is very common for us, um particularly in low income and, and, and mixed income properties, but we will pay the hot water. Um, that itself lends some, some complications to commercially available technologies. There are very few manufacturers that are making commercial scale electric domestic hot water heaters. Um, unless you want to go with an electric resistance boiler, which is very inefficient uh and expensive to operate. We're closely monitoring the market for heat pump water heaters that can serve, you know, five hundred thousand BTUs of demand like a building of this size and scale would require. Um, and they're just, they're just not there yet. Um. So I hope that answers your, your first question. Um, and at, at, at this point, the design um does include uh gas cooking in lieu of induction stoves, which are. Also very new to the market, um somewhat difficult to introduce to the, to the renter market. Um, historically had required specialized cookingware, um and that's changed a little bit in, in recent. I mean, honestly, in the matter of months. Um, but again, very limited sort of um product options in the marketplace, um making it difficult to. Repair and replace and, and maintain, et cetera. So, um, honestly, sort of, sort of practical product availability would be my uh summed up answer to your two questions.
Uh, thank you. Um, yeah, I would, I would kind of encourage you guys to, to consider induction stoves. I do understand that it's. New, a little bit new and uh people might not be used to it, but I think that, that really electric is really the future, so um I think that. Yeah, moving in that direction would be good. I also uh wanted to ask about um how much uh of the building's electricity will be. Uh powered by solar uh on a, on a typical uh basis, um and whether uh. You know, there might be a need for potentially more solar. It seems like there, there were some gaps potentially on the roof um that could be filled in and. I, I know that there was discussion at the Environmental Commission about solar canopies above the parking and I was wondering if uh. If there's a need for it, first of all, but if that was considered.
Ha- happy to answer that as well. There, there's not a need for it. Technically, um, we're, we're well in line with the, the hers ratings. Um, necessary for Energy Star and zero energy ready homes. Um, the, the roof can accommodate about a hundred and fifty or so kilowatts of solar that. There's a lot of variables that go into that. Um, but uh, you know, I, I think in a minimum, where we know we'll be able to get a hundred KW up there. Our hope is to squeeze as much uh solar on as makes sense to do, consider. makes sense to do, considering HVAC equipment, plumbing penetrations, venting, um, and also shading, right? So some of those higher elevations in the roof is gonna cast shadows on the, on the solar panels and dramatically reduce the efficiency of those panels. Um, with a roughly a hundred and fifty KW system on the roof, we're producing about a hundred and eighty thousand to two hundred thousand kilowatt hours of electricity a year, um, which is about half of the site's central and, and, and common area electric load. And, and with regard to solar canopies, um, we hadn't considered that. Um, at this stage, um, we could, it's about twice the cost of roof mounted solar. Um, and um, a little bit more complicated in terms of utility interconnections and approval process. Um, something we've evaluated in the past, we'd prefer to maximize it up on the roof to the extent possible first.
Uh, great. So um, just to clarify though, so um, when you say that it's gonna be zero energy, um, that means that essentially the, the solar will a, and um, I guess we'll cover kind of the use essentially.
Uh, I, I, I wanna clarify, we're pursuing zero energy ready homes certification. It will be certified under the Z E R H standard, which is not a net zero certification. It is uh, basically the Department of Energy's path to being that zero ready. So you're maximizing all of the efficiency in the building. Um, there's both a performance and a prescriptive component. You have to comply with both and we will. Um, but the solar is not uh, is to offset a hundred percent of the onsite energy load, including the one hundred and twenty-five, you know, apartments and, and, and the plug loads and TVs and laptops, et cetera, that we plugged into those loads.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
Sure.
Mr. Bodycomer?
I don't have a question. I have a comment. I just wanted to observe that in my day job, I, I work at the Economic Development Authority. I run a program called Aspire, which is a gap financing program to support uh, residential and commercial projects and strategic locations around the state. And in that capacity, I've had the opportunity to uh, to review project proposals for many, many projects around the state. Since the program launched in January, uh, talked with development teams for maybe five or six dozen projects throughout the state and one of the features of the program is a, a, a requirement that these projects include commu- community benefiting elements and to negotiate community benefit agreements. And I just wanted to comment that the package of amenities that is included as part of this project would rank it as among the top of any of those projects that I have seen come before. Myself and my colleagues at E D A, um, and to, to, to pay special attention to the fact that um, that the benefits are not only, uh, you know, things like the dog park and the bike amenities are not just benefits to the community, but also particular benefit uh, to the residency affordable units. Uh, one of my complaints for a long time about affordable housing in Princeton and in other places is it has been located far away from amenities, uh, transit service, bike routes, retail, opportunities to do errands. And this is not only close, but builds in features that will give people many options to, 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 to do the things they need to do in their life. Besides having a car and by reducing the amount of cost of own car ownership is a double benefit to the residents of those units. And so I just wanted to, to, to comment on those features of the, of the project that I observed. Um, and also, you know, wanted to tip my hat to the representatives of the town who've been working with the, 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 the project team to, to put this design together. Uh, because they've clearly been collaborating well and, and generating a really, uh, really excellent product. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, any other, Mr. Taylor? You're, you're muted.
Am I, am I alright?
Yes, sir.
I've been particularly impressed with the spirit of public-private partnership that this project represents. This is a term that's become extremely popular, used all the time, seldom with the understanding, the depth, the refinement that is demonstrated here. My practical question, we've talked about cars, we've talked about bikes, dogs, children, parks. Let me talk for a moment about residents. What I would be interested in knowing is given the mix of a hundred and twenty-five units, what is the range or the maximum residential population that this building can expect sustainably? Number one. Number two, what is the, from your experience, what is the proportion of children, school age, that such a population will generate? And thirdly, as a practical matter, have you considered whether or not the school system has any issues with the proportion of new students that will be entering Princeton in a period of very active growth?
Mr. Latizia, who is the right person to um, to field that question? I, I know that, that, well, I'll let you speak to the, Mr. Cohen.
I, I'll answer that.
Allowed to ask that question.
Correct, you're.
I was waiting for uh, Mr. Cohen.
All the questions are legitimate, except the one about um, schoolchildren, which technically cannot be factored in.
Yeah.
Uh, under the law.
Well taken.
Okay.
But I just wanted to add that there, you know, uh, the school district is aware, uh, and they have their own planning process and, and they're, they um, are aware of the estimated number of children and when they'll be arriving and they are planning accordingly. But no, that is not by law allowed for us to uh, consider.
Correct.
But might I know what the residential population is likely to be?
Uh, Mr. Taylor, uh, can we defer uh, that question? I'm, I'm sort of waiting for.
Well, Mr. Ginsburg opened his.
I was just gonna say the number of bedrooms. Oh, David, I didn't see you there. Thank you.
I was just gonna say, just mathematically, we have a hundred and ninety-four bedrooms in the project, um, which I think can, uh, on a hundred and twenty-five units. So I think that can give you some, some guidelines as to what that could, could be.
Good, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Ginsburg.
Um, Jack, did, were there other questions in there that you were posing that I, I wasn't writing notes when you, are you done?
Yeah, I, 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 I'm done. Well taken.
Okay, alright. Thank you. Um, I had just one um, quick question and that is the choice of a diesel generator, um, as opposed to a, a gas generator. I'm curious, maybe this is a um, question from Ms. McPike. Uh, maybe there's reasons I'm not aware of sustainability wise to go diesel instead of natural gas, but I'm, I'm concerned both about the noise, uh, and also the other, you know, impacts of diesel versus gas. Recognizing they're both fossil.
Yes, yeah, and, and I should say, just if the P S N S team would like to weigh in, um, happy to invite them to do so. Um, it's, it's something that I have um, learned a lot about over the last two years, um, as we've, we've had dozens of conversations with various fire departments and local jurisdictions, um, but, but particularly fire departments about this topic um, and code officials. So diesel generators are almost always mandated, um, because it is considered a more reliable fuel source. Natural gas, in the case of a grid outage, may be affected by that grid outage. Um, there could be a pipeline issue causing that grid outage. And so it's sort of a um, disassociation between the fuel that may be contributing to the outage and the fuel that you're relying on for your, um, for your backup power and critical power needs. So that's why on uh, every project that we're developing and building, we have diesel generators, diesel jet, then gen sets instead of natural gas. Um, sometimes it's mandated, uh, but, but most of the time it's really seen as um, a less risky fuel option. Um, there is no difference between sound, um, based on, based on fuel used. Um, I don't know, Jasper, if you have more specific specs or stats uh, worth sharing beyond that?
No, I, I think, I think you're uh, one hundred percent correct. Um, I know that there's been other discussions, um, and I think we also wanted to give ourselves some flexibility. Um, if we were to replace a generator down the road, uh, it would be easier to do with a diesel one. Um, the, the diesel generator does have a containment pits with them. Um, they also have to run uh, less frequently for maintenance purposes and there are, they are easier to maintain.
Okay. Um, seeing no other hands raised by board members, um, are there any of our professionals who have questions that they would like the applicant to address? Mr. Scoopian or um, Mr. Dobermillsky? Mr. Bridger? I'm not, I'm not trying to, to uh, drum up anything. I know we need to get to public comment, but um, uh, I did want to make sure that any questions that our own professionals had were addressed.
No questions at this time.
Um, good, then let's see.
Uh, Madam Chair, I, I, one uh, point of, of interest at my, since my question about the sheltered park, uh, sheltered bike lane was well received by the applicant, I'd like that to be considered as a condition of approval, since we're working with a new lawyer, um, uh, just like that to be considered a condition of approval.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, thank you for making that clear. I, I would like that as well. Um, so we will open up now for um, comments and questions from members of the public. If you are um, here uh, as a member of the public and would like to pose questions or make uh, comments, uh, now is the time to do it. If you could virtually raise your hand with your, with your, with the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen, if you move your cursor down there. Um, I'm seeing now three hands raised.
I just wanted to make an announcement that we have um, a total of seventy-nine participants, forty-nine of which are attendees. And right now, we have five hands raised.
Five hands raised, right. Um, so, and I'm gonna uh, name the first three so that um, people are sort of ready. Um, the, the first is Anne Shosch. Second will be Sharon Ainsworth and third Carol Golden. Uh, several more hands have been raised now. Um, I want to alert folks that we have a three minute uh, limit for public comments and um, Mr. Lesko, Justin Lesko will turn his um, his little rectangle on the screen into a three minute timer so that nobody needs to be interrupted and you can just see. So um, so Carrie, have you brought over Ms. Shosch?
Uh, Justin does that responsibility.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For me.
Mr. Lesko?
I believe she has been moved over though.
Okay, I'm not.
She's there.
Seeing that yet. Ms. Shosch, are you, uh, are you with us?
I am.
Ah, there we go. Perfect. Um, Mr. Regan will swear you in and um, then you'll give us your name and spell your last name and
You could just raise your. You swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
My name is Anne Shosch, spelled S O O S. I'm a member of the Environmental Commission, but I'm here speaking as a private citizen tonight. I'd like to ask the planning board to consider the following three items in your final recommendations. They are habitat, parking and traffic. Habitat, although this small wooded area seems unimportant, it is part of a green space running all the way from the Princeton Shopping Center to Herrentown Woods and Autumn Hill. Limiting the disturbance and maintaining tree cover as much as possible on this site will help to keep at least part of this greenway intact. Loss of habitat is one of the main reasons for the alarming worldwide decrease in biodiversity. And Princeton should make every effort to maintain and preserve habitat and to provide a green boulevard for wildlife, just as we provide bicycle boulevards for our human inhabitants. Parking, a large part of the disturbance on this site is for parking. A parking structure would reduce both the impermeable surfaces and impact on the environment. Avalon Bay at the other end of the shopping center includes a parking structure. Why not do the same here? Far less appealing, but still an alternative, is to include smaller spaces for compact cars. Even though this would have a greater footprint than a parking structure, it would be better than leaving things as they are. And while I am not advocating more parking, I suspect that residents from this development, as well as the development at the other end of the Princeton Shopping Center, will be availing themselves of the parking lots adjacent to the shopping center itself for overflow. There is also no pedestrian crossing to McCaffrey's, as noted by several uh, board members. Traffic. With the developments at Vannett, Turhune and Avalon Bay already in the works and adding hundreds of dwelling units and cars overall, I would like to suggest that Princeton needs to take a very hard look at the intersection of Turhune and Harrison and the traffic on Turhune and Harrison Streets overall. I can foresee Avalon Bay residents exiting through this development on the proposed new road to get to the light at Turhune when the signal light at McCaffrey's is overwhelmed by cars and urge planning to study the situation carefully, so we don't end up with a traffic situation similar to that involving the Graduate Hotel. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've already moved over Ms. Ainsworth. Sharon Ainsworth.
You could just. If you could just raise your right hand and unmute yourself.
I'm not seeing Ms. Ainsworth yet on
She's there.
My screen. Oh, okay.
She's trying to unmute herself. There we go.
There you go.
Your right hand.
Yes.
Swear that testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Sharon Ainsworth, A I N S W O R T H, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Shade Tree Commission and I'm the chair of the commission. Uh, the Shade Tree Commission's initial comments expressed serious concern with removal of the vast majority of the existing trees on the site, resulting in a substantial loss of tree canopy and wildlife habitat. There's been considerable shifting of the tree numbers, but based on the documents that we initially received, there were um, three hundred and ninety-nine trees in the initial inventory. And the bottom line is uh, roughly only about twelve percent of those existing trees will be retained under the plan. Um, the developer in, in their um, April twenty-seventh letter responded favorably to several of the Shade Tree Commission's recommendations, such as selecting more appropriate tree species, uh, including more plant diversity and also avoiding the extensive use of LA single type tree design. Uh, and we're also pleased that the developer has agreed to comply with the ordinance and to revise its plans uh, to include uh, additional trees. And then according to the document, again, referring back to the April twenty-seventh document, it indicates that the developer will put in three hundred and ninety new trees. The ordinance, again, The ordinance, again, your numbers have shifted a little bit, but our initial calculation was 382 would be required under the ordinance, so planting 390 new trees would actually be slightly more than the ordinance would require. However, an essential consideration in this is the successful establishment and survival of these newly planted trees. And given the fact that the property is just under six acres in size, and you have the new building, the roadways, the parking areas, and all the associated amenities, it just seems improbable that the newly installed trees could actually become established and survive over the long term. And we feel that there should be a reconsideration to try to retain, number one, to try to retain more of the existing trees, but extremely important is that any of the new trees that are planted need to have the opportunity to succeed and to establish themselves, and
Your time is up, ma'am. It's past three minutes.
So the bottom line is, you know, we, we hope that you'll reconsider perhaps even donating to the Shade Tree Trust we serve instead. Thank you.
Thanks, and when we're finished with public comment, because I, I don't want to stop for this, but I, I will ask Mr. Dobromilsky to, our landscape architect, to opine on some of what you said, because he has reviewed the landscape plan, and those points are well taken. The, the number of trees on the site increased a whole lot, which was good to see, but also raises questions about survivability. So thanks for raising that.
We have six members of the public have their hands raised. I've already moved Carol Golden over. After that, it's Janet Stern, Joe Butler, and Maria Duaiga.
And I just wanted to add, Louise, that we had asked Taylor Sapudar, the municipal arborist, to be here tonight to answer questions about trees. I don't know if he is here.
He was here.
Very. Okay, he is also available to answer tree questions.
Great, perfect. Thank you so much, Ms. Sax.
Ms. Golden?
Ms. Golden, can you raise your
Carol Golden, yeah.
Hi.
You swear that the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I swear that, yes. I really want to thank the presenters tonight, because I thought it was a very thorough and helpful description of what is to be on the corner of Turhune and North Harrison, if it goes forward. I live on Snowden Lane, and I am a member of the Affordable Housing Board, but I speak tonight as a private citizen. And I personally am thrilled to know that there's, that construction is coming and development is coming in this area of the shopping center where I live, because it is a hub of the town, and the opportunity for people who can't afford to live in the market-rate housing that's available in Princeton, that at least 20% of this new development will be set aside according to law for those folks of very low, low and, and moderate income is exactly what I think this town needs, and I appreciate all the effort that's gone into getting us to this point, and I hope this and the other projects that are online come to fruition. I appreciate all your work. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we're moving over Janet Stern and then Joe Butler.
Great. Is Ms. Stern here yet? I'm not seeing her on my screen, but
I believe so, yes.
There we go.
I want to
You need to be sworn in, Ms. Stern, okay?
Yes, okay.
Raise your right hand. Whether the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I'm Janet Stern. I represent the Shade Tree Commission, and I'm also a resident who lives about a block from the project. I have one question and one comment. We appreciate the public amenities that Mr. Sofeli listed as part of the proposed site, but as a member of the Shade Tree Commission, we wonder how those should be balanced against the benefits of the mature trees that will be removed to create them. So with that in mind, it was very difficult for us, looking at the plans, to understand what number of trees are being removed for each accessory. And, but parking, the dog park, well, they, they like trees. The dog run, the sculpture parks, the playground, the linear park. Can anyone enumerate the number of trees being removed for each of those accessories? We ask this because the Shade Tree Commission and the town recognize the critical need for mature trees and the benefits they provide, especially in light of increasing temperatures and increasingly violent storms and flooding. And there is universal acknowledgement, including that, that I appreciate was expressed by Winn about the need to have, reduce the carbon footprint of new development and thereby of the town. To that end, mature trees store much more carbon than young trees. So we're interested in how this proposed development can save more mature trees, perhaps by reconsidering trees removed for accessories. And just, this is my comment. The benefits of trees, everybody knows, I won't go over them, especially the dramatic revelations about the benefit to physical and mental health. The residents who moved into this development deserve to enjoy those benefits, too. On a viciously hot day, a grove of mature trees is cooling, inviting, calming, much more so, I would think, than an exposed patio or sculpture park. Why not build a park around the trees rather than remove them to create a park? Better yet, why create one when Grover Park and its playground are only footsteps away? Perhaps a financial contribution to improve Grover Park would be much more beneficial for everyone, including the trees. It's imperative now that new development should be making trees the first thought, not an afterthought. They are municipalities' best weapon against the calamitous effects of climate change, especially heat, flooding, and wildlife displacement. So we would be very appreciative if everything could possibly could be done to perhaps re-look at these accessories and save more, more trees on this site. Thank you.
Thank you. I've already moved
Sorry, I had myself muted. Thank you, Ms. Stern. Carrie, you've moved over
Joe Butler.
Ms. Butler, okay, good.
Ms. Butler.
Joe Butler, have you, can you turn your camera on? We're not seeing you yet. At least I'm not.
Just have to unmute yourself.
Yeah, now, I'm seeing you, Joe, now, because I'm on my second page, but you're muted.
Okay. I'm sorry, I had a malfunction. I apologize.
Okay. Mr. Regan will swear you in.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Joe Butler, 18 Haven Road. I actually have more questions and then one recommendation. When, on the traffic count, when you're comparing pre and post, I may have missed this. What date are you using as the pre-count, and I'm wondering, i- is it pre-pandemic? And then are we considered to be back to normal when you're looking at the intersections when you're comparing? Because I don't quite feel like we are, so that's one question. The other question that I have, or concern that I have, is what kind of coordination there's been with Edens? Because it looks to me like the new road. If you're coming west on Terhune, you could make a quick left onto the new road, cut through the shopping center, and avoid two bad lights, the one at Turhune and Harrison, and then Valley and Harrison, and pop out on the other end if you're headed to the train station, for example, or anywhere on Route 1. And we, it could turn the parking lot into a bit of a roadway, raceway. My other question is about the dog park. It's, the, the dog park is public, but will that become part of Grover Park? Will it be still owned by this, by Winn? And then will they be responsible for maintaining and policing it? And then I also want to voice concern to join others about that walkway dumping out into the shopping center, because not only is that the lane I park in, so that makes it extra dangerous, but it also, I know that coming out of there, you can look to your right, and just in a instant, people will be coming around that curb. It's really dangerous. You're going to have to create some sort of walkway with Edens. And pathways dangerous, the dog park. Oh, you've got two spots in the front of the building that are parking. I think that parallel parking on Turhune creates some friction with the bikers, if you're really going to, cyclists, if you're going to be backing in there, but the two in front of the building, particular between the two driveways, it seems to me that they really block the view of oncoming traffic for people who would want to be, particularly bike traffic, for people who are exiting. And I think my final comment is, you're probably going to want some shade in that linear park. A shade structure is the former liaison to the rec department. I know that they just keep adding shade and adding shade in our pool, and that looked like it could use some. And so I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So you raised several questions that are worth addressing. And as to the road connection, and the, that's a the road connection from the parking lot up to Turhune, is that something that the developer has you know, thought about and that's been factored into traffic analyses?
Well, in terms of the question, the future traffic from that road connection, if it does occur, was that taken into account in Mr. Chase's analysis? The answer is, is yes. Isn't that correct, Mr. Chase?
That is correct. I can hit on the, the, I believe the issue is more related to potential cut-through vehicles using the connector road and then cutting through the shopping center. Certainly, you know, it's a valid question. You know, vehicles are going to choose a path of least resistance, and really, for a vehicle traveling west on Turhune, turning left into that connector road and then into the shopping center, the resulting friction that you're going to have with vehicles utilizing the ring road around the shopping center and accessing the numerous drive aisles that litter the outside of the shopping center, it's certainly going to result in, in a much slower travel path than if you were to just stay on Turhune and then turn left on North Harrison and continue south. So in my opinion, you know, certainly there's the potential for vehicles to utilize that as a cut-through, but it, it's not going to lend itself to it, just based on the operations and the onsite circulation within the shopping center.
In the morning, it might, and you'll miss two bad lights. You'll miss the light at Turhune and the light at Valley.
And that's the, that's what happens when you have a capillary system. There were, you also raised a question about the crosswalk and the safety issue with the, or what we expect will be a crosswalk.
There's nowhere, there's nowhere to crosswalk to.
Well, under, understood, and I think that that's something that's going to be incumbent on the developer and the neighboring shopping center to address. And so we're going to have to make sure that that happens. I mean, trust the town to and, and the elected officials, since this is I, I understand, I understand, Mia, because I've gotten your texts, but
I was just going to mention, I was just going to mention that Edens and the developer work very closely together, and they meet regularly, so that we I, I was going to say to Joe, we, you know, that the issue of the road is, my understanding is something, and other connectivity issues have been discussed. And I think part of the thought of that road is that there's traffic coming out of the Avalon site there, and so there is, the, part of the impetus for having this road is that there will be less of a line coming down Turhune, that it will provide a bit of a relief valve, so that you don't have traffic going down there, but I, I, it does require some coordination with Edens, and it's our understanding that the applicant and Edens are in ongoing coordination about this and the ring road, and there are some other legal issues related to the road connecting to the shopping center that also, it's my understanding that the attorneys are still working, working that out. So it's a, it's a good question, and, and you know, you can see it both ways, but it's definitely a work in progress.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, I, I know that you're folks might be frustrated that sometimes we're enforcing the three-minute rule and sometimes we're not, but when we start back and forth with questions of the applicant or of the applicant's experts, then we have to allow that as, other than a three-minute comment period. So I'm sorry if I misunderstood what your point was going to be, Mia, so. Ms. Butler raised one other question that I want to just address, and that is the, the corner park parcel as opposed to the one that's got a bunch of trees in it, the corner park parcel that has no shade. She asked a question about that, and I, and I just want to ask if the applicant would be willing to put some, since that is a permeable pavement, as I understand it, perhaps it would be suitable for some trees within that area to provide additional shade in that corner plaza that right now is, is very wide open.
It looks like there is a possibility to add some trees and possibly even reduce the impervious at the south side of the playgrounds. Should also be noted that the, the playground equipment has a shade structure built onto the top of it. Didn't show in the, the rendering, but that's just a representative image. But it will have, because for that, the, the lower age group, you have to have that.
Yes.
But the dog park, the, who, who's going to maintain and police the dog park?
That's the municipality. It's a public access easement, which is between the developer and it will be part of the redevelopment agreement that will be negotiated between the town and the applicant, but that is part of a different set of agreements that is still being worked out. But it will, it's essentially that piece of land will be, it won't be deeded to the town, because that would have caused some zoning issues, but it will be something that is essentially municipal property as any of the other municipal recreational properties.
And my understanding is that the trees that are in that area, to address the question raised by Shade Tree, are going to remain, which I'm sure will make the dogs really happy. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Butler. Mr. Gomori?
Maria Duaiga, and then Mr. Gomori. And then we have, and then we have five, five more individuals.
Raise your right hand.
Do you swear that the testimony about the give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
My name is Maria Juega. I am a resident of Grover Avenue within a block or a block and a half of the siding question. Extremely excited by what I heard tonight. It was a very thorough presentation. I did join late. I do have some questions which may have been answered. And if so, I apologize or may not, you may not be able to answer them at this point. But the first one is, what is the anticipated construction time from beginning to end? The second one is what is the projected occupancy? Start of occupancy? And the third question is if you have an estimated range of prices for the market units? And then I have one suggestion and that is nothing that I propose be required or part of the plan at this point. But the suggestion would be that the developer approach or, or hold conversations with the school district about possibly siding a pre-K facility on the grounds. I, the, the, because the school district has received funding for universal pre-K in Princeton. And given the anticipated demographics of the population here, I think it would be an asset to have a pre-K location there. And also I would assume a selling point for, for the units. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So can you speak to the timeframe for construction and occupancy? And if you know anything about the anticipated price point for the market rate units?
Mr. Ginsburg can respond to those questions.
Regarding the timeframes in construction, preliminary estimates for the overall construction schedule are about 16 months of direct construction period. To obviously how the rest of this night goes and subsequent approvals. Timing for putting a shovel in the ground is, I'd say, dependent on a couple of factors. But assuming a, a late Q3 groundbreaking of 2022, that would put us for initial occupancy late 2023, early 2024. I think we are still assessing market studies to confirm subject rents of the property. But I think it's fair to say it'd be consistent with our market, direct market competition in the area at the Avalon properties, both at ten and at the shopping center.
Any thought about pre-K?
Had not previously considered that, but I think that is something we could discuss. It's not unheard of, but I, you know, it's an interesting concept.
Something to tuck away. Thank you.
I've moved over Andrew Gomori, if you're ready for him to speak. And the next individual is David Newton.
Do you swear the testimony about the give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
I would just like to comment that I'm very positive about the development being discussed tonight. I think it, I see it as a very important part of Princeton's fair share settlement, which as we know, has been litigated for over five years at high cost. And it is now time to begin fulfilling this obligation. I think the proposed development is in a sensible location near the shopping center, which makes it work for both housing and the shopping center itself. An open process has been followed. And while a valid objection should be heard and the developers should be held to agreements that they're making, I think objections whose only purpose is to delay should not be entertained. I would just like to commend the work of the planning board. I think we've done a terrific job. Please keep up the good work. And thank you for allowing me to make this comment.
Thank you.
I've already moved over Mr. Newton.
Mr. Newton, unmute yourself.
I have.
Okay, if you raise your right hand, you swear the testimony about the give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Thank you very much for listening, letting me listen to this hearing tonight. And the comments I've heard have been very positive. My, my, the developer is really led locally by a friend of mine by the name of Steve Gilbert, who is a Princeton resident and a friend and a partner of mine. I live actually at 49 Governor's Lane. So I am somewhat of an interested party in this particular location. And I've lived here for 25 years. Many years ago, back in 1985, I was actually a bidder for the shopping center. And I lost and during the last 37 years, I always looked on the shopping center as a very interesting development opportunity. And I basically am very excited about this, about what's happening in this particular corner of Princeton. And I think it's a project which has actually been delayed for some 30 years. And I hope that including the wind development and including what is happening at Edens, that there will be some thought put towards not creating just another shopping area, but in fact, another downtown, which will complement obviously what we have at the moment in downtown Princeton. But will be in terms of its environment and what we look at, will not just be the format of an old sort of 1960s, 1970s style, you know, shopping center anchored by a supermarket and a drugstore. But we can see something that will also bring to life that corner. And really, you know, add something to what is already a great community. You know, I, I basically feel in terms of any development that Princeton's about to see that we've, we've lived somewhat in, in a time of delay. I, I refer to Princeton sometimes as Brigadoon, that it comes alive every 25 years. And I think in this type of period, we should take advantage of the fact that this town is actually alive for the first time. And, and insist that the shopping area is, is built up to something that really complements the community that, that we live in. And that includes not only landscaping, but also the quality of the building. Thank you very much, and I really like to support this development.
Thank you, Mr. Newton.
The next person is Leslie Wishnick. And then after that, I did have Sophie Grover, but we have Grovier.
Ms. Wishnick, if you could unmute yourself. If you raise your right hand, you swear the testimony about the give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I just have a few comments to make. Projects like these are really challenging and they always have to balance all sorts of competing interests and community needs and perspectives. And I think what was demonstrated tonight was that they, that Princeton and the developer have worked very, very well together and have tried to balance many of these needs and addressed many of the issues that people have spoken about tonight. It's, I find the project to be a very attractive and appropriate use for this site. The developer has met or exceeded all the planning, sustainability and engineering design requirements with no variances. I did find it kind of interesting that this, this project is so up to date that it now incorporates features in the building that help people with their new work styles and what we've learned from the pandemic. It's very, very cool, aside from EV stations. And, and it's, it's just the, the rooftop. So many features that, that we have, we as a community can be proud of to be on this building. I do know Steve Gilbert personally. And we, we did discuss the name of this building. And I know that's very near and dear in his heart. An emotional issue for me as well as him. And I'm glad we decided that the Alice was a great name. And finally, I really committed to affordable housing. I think communities only benefit by having a very diverse, very diverse population. And there are so many places in this country where that's just not the case. We're very, very lucky to, to have that diversity here. And so to have 25 affordable housing units incorporated into this project to help Princeton meet, meet its obligation as well is very, very meaningful. So I, I fully support this project. Oh, and I'd like the top corner unit with gas burners.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I was incorrect before Ms. Glovier, others, Pat Gialella. That's been moved over to speak.
Okay.
Raise your right hand, please. You swear the testimony about the give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thanks very much for the presentation. It's very interesting. My husband and I live at, on North Harrison Street across from the said project. Three quick questions. One question was already asked before, and that was when the, when was the traffic study completed? I believe it was completed during the pit, excuse me, pandemic in 2020. Is that correct? Second, what is the setback of the building on North Harrison Street? And I have a safety concern. There is quite a bit of pedestrian traffic on North Harrison Street. And with the main entrance to the property on North Harrison Street, I'm concerned about pedestrians, some sort of warning for pedestrians or something needs to be considered for that entrance and exit on the shop, to the, to the development. And I think that's about it.
Mr. Chase, can you answer the question about the date of your counts, please?
Certainly. You are correct, ma'am. The, the counts were done in July of 2000, or rather, June of 2020. But we did review historical traffic count data that was done prior to the pandemic and then adjusted those volumes accordingly to account for any influence in resulting traffic volumes.
So you're saying that there's really no, no difference between the time the study was done and and now and afterwards?
No, there was, and that's why we reviewed the historical traffic volume. So we actually factored up our traffic counts significantly to account for pre-pandemic conditions.
Okay, okay. All right.
And then I think Mr. Sefali can answer the question about setbacks.
Sure. So the, the front yard setback on North Harrison is 27.7 feet or so from the property line.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And you had a pedestrian safety?
Yeah.
Question is, and is that, I'm sorry, relates to the entrance on North Harrison?
That's correct. There's quite a bit of traffic there, so.
Well, let the applicant speak to it. I, I think that there's a raised intersection there, if I'm not mistaken, but.
On North Harrison is the existing intersection that's signalized intersection.
The drive, the new driveway.
At the driveway itself. Let me think about this.
A lot of people go to lunch.
Yes, I think it, it definitely helps that it is one way in and out. It's only looking in one direction as you're crossing.
There's no left turn movement from the driveway toward the traffic signal coming out of?
No, it's a right turn out only.
Oh, I see.
And that, and then a left turn or a right turn in also.
Correct. It's in and out, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, you'd only be having really the, the traffic coming north on Harrison to look for.
Okay, but there's still cars going in and coming out. I'm just saying as a pedestrian.
Yes, actually, the one, the one thing I should mention, this, this will actually be a depressed curb with an apron. So it'd be more like a typical homes driveway. So the cars are really going to have to slow down to make the turn into the site versus flying around the, the radius. So that, that should definitely help with pedestrian crossings. Because essentially the sidewalk is raised.
And I'll just add to Mr. Sefali's response, there is a delineated crosswalk there. So there's a marked area for those pedestrians to cross the driveway. And there is a clear line of sight for vehicles traveling north on North Harrison to see pedestrians utilizing that crosswalk and sidewalk area. So we did, we did take that into consideration. Certainly pedestrian vehicle interactions are of the utmost concern to us and we do feel that'll be safe and efficient. Good luck.
Okay, thanks. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
We've already moved over Ms. Glovier. The next person is Hillary Persky and then Tineke Theo.
Just raise your right hand. You swear the testimony about the give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. My question is regarding Mr. Scoopian's memo about the stormwater. I believe it was of April 26th and he had a variety of technical comments. And I, I don't believe I've heard those addressed tonight. And it seems important to, to finalize the details of the stormwater management system. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Great. I thought I heard in testimony that his, well, I'll let you speak to that, Mr. Latizia or your experts.
Yes, I believe Mr. Sefali did comment that he did review that memo from Mr. Scoopian. And we can address those comments as part of condition of approval. We have no, no issues with, with those technical recommendations. But I, I think what's important about that report though is I think it's in the first or two paragraphs. Sir Scoopian confirms that the design, as we have revised it, comports with the, the applicable standards.
Yes, agreed. Just in reading some of his comments, I, I, I don't know that it's clear how that, how everything would be accomplished in order to, you know, have the design exactly finalized prior to the board approving it. So that was just my question.
Well, we have Mr. Scoopie in here. Joe, if you're listening, there you are. Can you testify as to your understanding about the applicant's willingness and ability to meet your, maybe the question shouldn't be put to you. The applicant, Mr. Sefali, has said that he's that he's complying with all that's in your memo. Is that correct?
You know, Mark, I don't know whether you should go first or I should.
Go ahead, Joe.
Well, no, what I heard was that they've received the report and that they've reviewed it. And they feel that they will be able to comply with the comments. Whether they will, that's, you know, we have to take, have to take a look at what, what they submit. I, I have to say that so far, the PSNS people in general and Mark in particular have been, you know, very cooperative, very professional. We've, we've discussed alternatives. We've debated alternatives. And so I, I feel we can, you know, there, there's a good relationship there. Whether it can be worked out, we'll have to see.
But that would be a, a condition of approval if we get there tonight, which I'm hoping and expecting that we do, that they would meet these requirements per your, to your satisfaction.
Yeah. There, there, I saw some changes tonight that looked like they will address the, some of the quantity impacts. My only comment would be that this is a My only comment would be that, uh, this is a unique approach to stormwater in using. The storage under porous paving for the quantity control. That's the first time I've seen that. Uh, second is it's a very complicated proposal. There's, there's. About forty individual stormwater management measures that are being proposed. Uh, most of them are involved with the porous paving. Uh, so it's, it's complicated, a lot of details to work out. And maintenance is going to be absolutely critical here to make sure everything works the way it's intended to. But again, uh, you know, the applicant and his engineer say that they will comply.
Um, I, I, I think that the applicant testified that they've gone above and beyond what's required. With sort of a belt and suspenders approach combining. The. Bio retention bio infiltration areas with permeable pavement and et cetera, et cetera, and rain. Even the green roof, although I guess that's not factored in. I, I wanted to ask a question about the, whether the, and maybe this is a question for you, Mr. Sefali, are there? I'm thinking of the largest of the. Rain garden areas, which I gather, um, sort of at the. Southeast portion or eastern side anyway. Is that? In, an important part of the belt and suspenders. Approach here because I'm just wondering whether the clearing of those trees is. To add that bio. That bio basin. Whether the trees that are there could, you know, ser- serve that purpose just as well. I, I say that advisedly, knowing that there's extremely high sensitivity and rightly so to downstream flooding. With Harry's Brook and all, and I don't want to even hint that I want to. And I understand also that you're looking to the future with, um, you know, even higher than required kind of standards. But I, I'd like for you to talk about whether that biggest basins is necessary in your view. For stormwater management or whether it's there to. For some other reason.
Sure. So I, the largest basin is taking the lower. Or the southernmost portion of our parking lot. Uh, so in addition to the porous paving storage that we have under the parking lot. Uh, we needed to get additional capacity for storage within that bio retention basin. Uh, so it's providing additional water quality, but it's also getting us. Uh, help to meet our water quantity reductions, mostly on the two-year storm. These are pretty small basins. They're not deep.
Mark, we have your computer screen up.
Uh, sorry. Uh, let's see.
I don't mean to make you go into a whole ton of detail here. Um, the hour is late and we still have people who haven't spoken. Um, and I'm, uh, I see Mr. Purcell has. Has turned his camera on, which means he might have something to say here.
No, I, 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 and, and you all know that, um, stormwater management is. One of the most important parts of all of these developments and that we pay particular attention. And Mr. Scoopian does a tremendous job working with our developers. Um, to make sure that every number is checked and every T is crossed and I dotted. Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, but the bottom line is. Um, with the design as is. It, it's our belief that they have met the requirements in terms of reducing downstream. Um, flows and, and rates of, of flows into Harry's Brook. What we're, what we're trying to accomplish is to make sure that the numbers. Work out exactly right. So. I, I, it, it's, it's our belief as well that they will. Uh, meet the requirements in, in the comments that, uh, Mr. Scoopian has put in. Joe, go ahead and correct me if I'm wrong.
Uh, no, that's fine. Um, there's a, there's, this is probably, no, not probably, we'll take probably. And I don't want to take a lot of time because it is getting late. This is by far the most complicated project I've ever reviewed in Princeton. And I've been doing this for a long time. Um, if you think about forty stormwater management basins. And each one of those has at least two components of runoff to it. So now we're talking a hundred and twenty different pieces that have to be checked, each having dozens of numbers. So it's a complicated design. But I think that, um, we can, you know, I, I don't see where it, I, I can see solutions that, that, that can be applied. Uh, we just have to agree on them.
And the one thing I want to add is a lot of this is driven by the, the new updates to the stormwater management rules. Um, using porous paving and bio retention are the preferred methods of meeting the rules. And the challenges on this site with the, the poor soils make it very difficult. Uh, so we've done everything we possibly can, putting basins everywhere we possibly can to meet the rules with these constraints that are. Dealt to us on this property.
And I guess the question I'm asking is, is that biggest basin that you have there? Is it necessary to remove those trees and woods there and create the basin? In order to meet the rule requirements? Or is that above or, or, or are you going above and beyond?
No, that, the, the two years dorm reduction is, is pretty close. And that, that definitely helps us to achieve, uh, that reduction.
Okay, and the, you testified the vegetation in there is mostly low. Can you? Uh, is that a basin that you could put? Trees in?
Yes, yeah, we, we do have several trees in the bio retention basins. Uh, they're just water tolerant species that are, are meant for that type of environment. Uh, in addition to the meadow mix, so it creates a like nice aesthetic as well. Uh, it's very natural looking and does provide habitat for pollinators, as I said.
Yeah, I, I should add that one of the comments in my report. Uh, is references some of the bio retention basins, which are providing additional water quality. Control over and above, but are not really providing any additional quantity control. And so what I'm recommending is that we review some of those that are not providing the quantity control. To see balance the need for those or balance the, the suspenders part of their, of their function. With, with the disturbance of the site, uh, with, just with the cost of ma- you know, the cost of construction and maintenance and operation. Uh, the safety aspects, uh, just to make sure that the, the extra value or the over and above. That you're getting on water quality is, is, is worth the, the site disturbance and, and all the other factors. Not to say that they aren't, but not to just automatically say, well, let's do more. But well, let's see what the price of the more is. That's all.
Yeah. Mr. Cohen. You're on mute still. There you go.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to suggest, you know, I was sympathetic to Janet's. Comments about trying to keep more trees, but I think it might be more fruitful to look at. Locations like the Plaza, you know, the Art Plaza at the corner of the New Road and. And Terhune Road or. Locations in the Linear Park where there may, maybe some decent trees that could be, uh, incorporated into the design there. Rather than.
Mess around with.
There's so many messing around with the stormwater.
Yeah.
This, which is so complicated as Joe has, has been telling us.
Yes, point, point taken. Okay, let's continue with public comment. Um, and I just, uh, let me just now, since we're at eleven, eleven. Is it okay with the board if we go until eleven thirty?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, let's, uh, keep going.
Okay, Hillary Persky, we've already moved her over. And the last person is Tineke Theo.
Great. Hi. Do I need to start my video? I guess I do.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Hi.
Your right hand?
Um, yeah.
Testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Welcome. Um, thank you. This is quite a presentation and I'm very grateful for the town's focus on affordable housing. Given the direction that housing has taken these last many years. I also want to express support for those who've spoken in favor of greater tree retention. And I was excited to hear the conversation that just took place about the possibilities of additional trees. Um, and some of the plaza art sculpture or the linear park areas. And perhaps, um, those are opportunities to actually retain some mature trees rather than taking them down. And planting others. And along with that, I want to add that there may be opportunities to, um, plant other shrubs. Native shrubs and. Low growing plants and native trees around the existing mature trees. And to create perhaps at least one of what's called a tiny forest. Um, which seems to be, um, an interesting idea. And these very small groves, um, they can be as small as a tennis court, even far smaller. Can assist with, um, a number of ecological services that will be lost, given the numbers of trees to come down. Um, including of course, water absorption, carbon sequestration, heat reduction and support of biodiversity. So I hope that the, um, I hope that this recommendation will be considered. It seems like there are some nice spaces where there might be an opportunity to do this. Um, I also had several, um, other comments. One about opportunities in some of the lawn areas to perhaps plant native grasses. Which would actually require no mowing, no fertilizing and minimum. If, you know, you know, very little water or perhaps no regular watering. I noticed the comment about no facilities for leaf mulching, um, on site. But I think that given the numbers of planting areas that were featured in your design. You could actually collect the leaves and distribute them in some of these planting areas, um, including the area for. Managing stormwater. I would actually recommend that you consider using LED yellow streetlights rather than white. Um, the insects that you're going to attract or that you appear to be interested in attracting the pollinators that you've referenced with your plantings. Um, will have more chance of survival. Um, moths and in particular, if you're not using lights that will attract insects and cause them to fly around those lights. Until they die. And finally, I wanted to ask if there'd been any consideration about windows that would, or window designs. That would help to mitigate against bird collisions. Um, that's a question.
Uh, can anyone speak to the last question first, just since it's a simple one? I think.
Mr. Ryberg, bird collisions. We see you.
All right, I'm just trying to get my screen up to have you rather see a, a, a nice rendering than me for sure. In, in, in regards to the, uh, the, the birds and, um, uh, interruption with the glazing. Um, uh, all the windows have, um, a, 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 a nice array of, uh, muttons in them. Uh, to help with, uh, that's not large glazing areas provided. And then there's also, um, uh, there's setback in the wall envelope due to a high performance envelopes. There's very deep cavity in the wall envelope. So there's always, um, shadow lines around the windows. And we hope that that would help out with those, uh, issues.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Persky. Okay, just have one, one other follow-up question. She asked specifically about the, um, LED yellow streetlights as opposed to. White, is that a, um, an adjustment the applicant is willing to make? Or do our own professionals have any comment about that? Seeing none.
I can say that we, we've definitely used warmer, um, tones like a three thousand Kelvin. And, and I know that's regularly referenced by, by lead and enterprise green communities as well. Um, and we'll take that into consideration.
Okay, thank you. Uh, welcome, Ms. Theo. You need to be sworn in. Sorry to hold you up.
You swear the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Thank you for, uh, sticking it out. I will try to be brief. I would like to support this, um, this proposal. I love it. I have several friends. Who are single, don't live in Princeton, are not ready to buy. A single family home that's freestanding. And I think this would be really an attractive option for them. I love the passive house, uh, envelope. Because I, I think energy conservation is super important. I would like to advocate for electric cookstoves. Because gas cookstoves are a major source of indoor air pollution. Fossil gas contains all sorts of nasties. I would like to thank you for pushing back on the idea of a shared use, uh, pedestrian and bicycle path. Uh, I think separating the bicycles from the pedestrians is the way to go. And I would like to call on the town to think very carefully about how that bicycle path connects to Terhune. Because if I'm going to bike out there and I want to make a left turn onto Terhune. The cars who are also going to make a left turn are on the right of me. And I will need to pack, to cross their path to get to, um, the, my, my path on Terhune. I love it that you have so much bicycle parking and that they are covered. But I would like to encourage you to think about. Uh, how to make it secure parking. It's not just that an e-bike starts at two thousand dollars and goes up from there. It's that, you know, if your bike goes right now, it's impossible to replace it. So, um, please consider making the bicycle storage for, for residents secure as well as weatherproof. Finally, I used to be a mom of toddlers and. I look at your proposal for the playground. I, I, I love the playground, by the way. But it would be great to have a tree, a tree, not a canopy. Because the tree will give you that, that evapotranspiration cooling. It's gonna be cooler than just a canopy and more beautiful. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I do not see any other hands raised in, um, public comments. So this is last call. Seeing none, I will close the public comment. We do have to go back to a question raised. Early on. By Ms. Ainsworth on behalf of the Shade Tree Commission. Um, we have Mr. Dobremilsky and Mr. Sapador. Uh, with us and can you, um, speak to? The viability of the trees in the design and the overseeing of the. Planting and the. Et cetera, et cetera. The concern that, that, um, Ms. Ainsworth raised. I don't care who goes first.
Danny, your first.
Okay, so I, I, I did hear all the comments and I really appreciate them very much. I think the, the interest and the, the, the understanding of the value of trees is, is spot on. However, I think, uh, you really have to look and understand that, that. The, the site is not flat. Um, every one of these improvements, uh, you have to modify the grade. In order to fit these onto the site. And then every one of these improvements has an underground component that's going to require excavation. There's a lot of them are going to require interconnection utilities. Um, when you put that all together, it's, it's almost impractical to think you can save more trees on this site. And be able to build what they're building. Not to mention, they have to have areas to stage the construction of this. And be able to build what they're building, not to mention they have to have areas to stage the construction of this. They can't just build it by dropping it out of the sky. And I'm not trying to be facetious. I'm just saying it's, it's, we'd love to save trees and I'm an advocate for that without a doubt. But I think it, the practicality of it, it's very difficult. And then you couple that with, you heard some of the existing species of trees that are present. These are pioneer trees. They've not been cultivated. They've not been maintained or managed. For, since they, they were deposited or seeded into the site. And I think it's really more realistic to think that you could bring in a new landscape and fit it into the new planting areas that are created. And get them to thrive and try and struggle to save an existing tree that you're going to mutilate its root system. Before you, before you get started. So I, I, I understand the concern. I understand the value, but I think it's not really practical. To think you can save a large number of trees on this site and develop it and at the level that's being proposed.
I think one of the, as I understood it, part of the concern was that there were going to be so many trees. Because the revised plan has so many trees in there. Mr. Sapador, I did not give you a, please go ahead, sorry.
No, no problem. Thank you. So just to go off of what Ms. Ainsworth, the Chair of the Shade Tree Commission had indicated. The original plan called for one hundred ninety seven trees, a mixture of shade trees, ornamental trees, evergreen trees and then to comply with the ordinance, it was three hundred and ninety trees was total but or was additionally proposed, but the, the acreage stayed the same, the square footage stayed the same. So our biggest fear, my biggest fear is that these additional one hundred ninety three trees are just forced into the landscape. So the, the issue that I have is that though it's great to see trees planted. We want to make sure that they're established appropriately for longevity of the site, not just to build numbers. So I just want to reiterate that we do have a Shade Tree Trust Reserve. So in the event that the landscape is not that these trees cannot fit in a scientific standpoint, that we do have a Shade Tree Trust Fund at the cost of five hundred and fifty dollars per two point five inch caliber tree, six foot evergreen that could be issued or could be paid into the fund. So I just want to just reiterate that. I just don't want to see a landscape that is forced just to comply with numbers. That's all.
And I would concur with that. I, one of my initial comments was going to be, how do you fit three hundred ninety trees back in? But I think some of it was the request to increase the density of some of the buffer plantings and things like that. And a lot of the plantings, the evergreen trees are going to be kind of narrow growing species. So that may be where some of that's coming from. But ultimately, we'll have to see what they submit.
Do you think that some of them might be relocated to the areas that are more like open plaza right now, the corner park area near the intersection with the new road or the part of the playground as.
They, they most certainly should, but in, in regards to ecosystem services, I just want to say that a large shade tree, meaning a tree that gets larger in diameter or larger. They're typically longer living rather than planting ornamental trees throughout the entire landscape. So if, if the three hundred and ninety trees are planted, I just don't want to see all ornamental plantings throughout the entire landscape just because scientifically, they don't live as long, which will ultimately lead to more removal of trees, replacement of trees and, and so on and so forth. So in the event that we can't plant the three hundred and ninety trees in a you know, environmentally responsible manner than the, the donation into the Shade Tree Trust Fund could most definitely benefit this project.
Yeah, that, that's a point very well taken and I know we all want to get done tonight. I'm wondering if we might, I see your hand up, Mr. Cohen, might leave some of the final decision making about the trees to the landscape committee. And get past this particular question tonight. Mr. Cohen?
You read my mind. Because we I was going to suggest that the landscape committee, subcommittee review be a condition of the approval.
And she took the words out of my mouth. I was about to say when, when you raised your hand.
Okay, well, I, I'm tempted to say brilliant minds think alike, but I'm more self-aware than that. Okay. Are there any other questions from board members or would Mr. Regan care to go over what we've talked about in the way of things to include in the, I know this is a conforming application, but we have talked about a few things that the applicant was willing to to do, including the barriers, the barrier on
Sheltered bike lane.
Harrison, yes. Couple of other things.
Yeah, well, obviously the discussion we just had with respect to the trees, which was an extensive one. I guess there's the question of the compliance. Not proposing to comply with three of the recommendations in the traffic. In the traffic report. I don't know how the board wants to deal with that. I, I hate to to bring up an issue to continue to discuss, but there were three points. My notes reflect, you know, that they were not, they were not agreeable to complying with.
Could you quickly summarize those?
Unfortunately, I don't have the letter in front of me. I have the numbers and I don't remember.
Madam Chair, Dan McGinnis from McMinn Associates is here and, and I think that he can probably.
I can, I could take a shot at it.
Thank you.
I believe Good. Mr. Regan, you, you can, you can correct me as I go along. Number five. They were not minimal to providing the buffered bike lane. But however, with Mr. Quinn's suggestion, maybe they reconsider that.
I'm sorry, the, the buffered, what they did not want to do is provide a buffer between the parallel parking and the bike lane on Terhune. That's a different location than where Mr. Quinn was suggesting the flexible pollinators.
That's correct.
Yeah. But what they have provided is in accordance with our master plan and in accordance with NACCO. So Dan, I think we can you know, we, we don't need to insist on that.
An item eleven. The request to widen the, the shared path from eight feet wide to ten feet wide. They decided space limitations.
I think we're cool with that.
Yeah, and item fifteen. They, they basically addressed that one, I believe. So really, I think it's just those two, those two items. I think they agreed to address all the other items in my letter.
Okay.
And just to reiterate, we, we won't fall on our swords over those two little items.
Especially, especially since Tynica was in favor of keeping the bikes and the pedestrians separated. If Tynica's in favor of it. You know, the bike advocacy communities in favor of it.
Yes.
I think we're good.
Agreed.
Mr. Regan, I think it was pretty obvious from our presentation, but there are some comments in the Environmental Commission memo and a Shade Tree memo that we are not agreeing to. I can go through those if, if you want. Our response letter sets forth all that and our reasons for saying, but I'm happy to do that. So the board is aware of it and they can determine if it's appropriate or not.
I think that would be appropriate.
Okay. The Prince Environmental Commission Review Letter date January twenty six. Unfortunately, there's a number of items and they're somewhat repetitive. They, they say it two or three times, but one of the comments is make the project all electric. Well, we're predominantly electric. I think we explain why. So it's
I think Ms. McPike addressed that.
That's right. The next one is designed to meet passive house plus certification. We're doing passive house. We're necessarily not going all the way for certification. I don't think that's needed. Or necessary. It's really just a cost. Green roof should be installed on the upper roof, not just on the lower roofs. I think we, you know, we, we explained that there's really no areas that make sense. Still solar shading. Didn't think that was necessary, given the design parameters that have been incorporated that Mr. Ryberg discussed. I'm sorry, I should be referencing the items. So I'm under Building and Energy. Items one, two, four and five, we're not agreeing to. In full, I should say, there are some aspects that we are. Then under Stormwater Management, there was a comment from the commission that we reviewed the impact on Harry's Brook. Together with other neighboring development projects. Have not done that. We were asked to do that by your stormwater consultant. We don't think it's necessary or required. We're meeting all the requirements of, of the stormwater ordinance. Under landscaping, item four, there was a suggestion to provide a community garden. I don't think we said this in testimony, but in our response, we're not proposing one at this time. We feel the other community spaces that are being provided throughout the development are, are adequate at this time. We didn't think right now an eating community garden was was necessary or desirable. Then under the section of environmental justice, I think this is where it becomes repetitive. There's again, requests for all electric building. Passive house certification. By the way, this section is not numbered. So I had no paragraphs to tell you what numbers they are. They're just paragraphs. Again, there was recommending golden for Lee Gold certification. We're not proposing to do that. There was a, there was a comment about increasing the width of sidewalks to six feet. We do provide some six foot wide sidewalks adjacent to particular parking, but other walks are four feet. Or five feet in accordance with the Princeton requirements and there are, we believe there are sufficient passing spaces along all the sidewalks in accordance with ADA. So again, we don't think that's necessary to provide six feet of width sidewalks everywhere.
Madam Chair, Jim, Jim Purcell here. At, at the risk of stepping out of place. May I suggest that the board has received the response letter and that they've agreed to a number of conditions and that the redundancy that Mr. Lutizi is going through is not really worth going through, that the board could probably accept their response letter with all of the conditions that they've agreed to. And all of the conditions they haven't and add in the couple of things that took place tonight. I'm sorry, it's really not my place to say that, but I know.
No, I, I, I agree. I mean, I
It's all right. Yeah.
It's hard to, it's hard to really respond to a lot of things. I mean, I think that they partially achieve some of the things and some cases they, they don't. And so I, I, and they responded pretty well in their documents. So I don't know if it's necessary.
Thank you very much, Dan. Thank you too, Jim. I, I read the whole response too, and I thought it was, it was quite responsive. So and which I really, really appreciated. Cause it was very helpful preparing for this meeting to go through this, you know, very long set of responses. So.
The last condition I had, chairwoman was really just that the applicant worked with Edens to, to come up with some type of, you know, pedestrian safety for the connection of the site, you know, to, to Edens. I think that's really the, the last condition.
Yeah, that is, that's imperative. And I, I don't know that, that's, that's something that we need to trust with our professionals. And perhaps they can bring a plan when they come to the landscape subcommittee and show, show what the plan is then, but I appreciate that the applicant understands how important that that connection is. Both at the, both at that sidewalk connection and also at the end of the connector street. Where this, there's also another sidewalk and the bike lanes. There will need to be crosswalks in both of those areas. So with that, and given this very late hour for which I apologize and also am very grateful to everybody here for hanging tough with this because I know it's really important to get through and it's not our normal practice. There any final questions or would someone like to make a motion? Ms. Sax?
I would love to make a motion that we vote to approve the application. With the conditions.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McGowan. Was that you, Alvin?
It was me.
I did, you said it so fast, I couldn't see your yellow box around your face. Okay, thank you. It's been moved by Ms. Sax, seconded by Mr. McGowan. Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Capizoli?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Absolutely, yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thanks, everybody, so much. Thank you to the applicant and thanks to the public for your forbearance and for raising some really good questions and I wish I had a pithy way of saying good night. Mr. Cohen?
I move the we adjourn.
I will second Councilman Cohen's.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Be Thursday.
Thank you again, everybody.